Good morning.
Good morning.
We will call this meeting to order. Um, thank you so much. Clerk, do we have public comment today?
Yes, ma'am.
And you said the thing is highlighted?
Yes.
Okay. Right, public comment. The Board of Commissioners welcome our citizens come in. It is my goal to make this meeting run smoothly and efficiently in order for the government to be effective. In this vein, I ask everyone to follow the rules of the body as directed by the Chair. I also ask that everyone please assist me in keeping order in this room during these deliberative process, so that our citizens' time, including those watching on TV, is not fruitless. With that being said, I would like to call our first citizen out, Mr. Larry Pierce. Would you please come forward, state your name, and I believe your subject matter is State Representative Ray Barnes? Or that can be that.
I write C called Kitchen Chicken Scratch.
Okay. Well, we'll just allow you to tell us what it is. All right, Mr. Pierce.
Larry Pierce, 4120 Vanceant Road, Douglasville, Georgia. Morning, Madam Chair, and everyone here, especially the citizens.
Mr. Pierce, before you start, I just want to make it clear to the citizens and also to you, before you start, you have a three-minute segment. I forgot to mention that piece, so you have three minutes. You're hearing the buzzer. After your three minutes, please wrap up. And I'm just saying, I forgot to mention that, so please proceed.
City Council has five. Y'all need to get together.
I know. I'm gonna work on that.
And you just can't believe what I go through in one week to bring up to y'all in three minutes.
Yes.
Well, first off, I just want to show y'all that I went out to Sweetwater Park and I talked to the man, Mr. Make sure Roger Bruce. I know so many Rogers. I talked to him, and I couldn't find him. And I assure you, when I drove up there, I felt like the Lone Ranger. But I walked around, and my leg was hurting. And I went over to this lady over here, and I said, "Could you tell me where Mr. Bruce is and what he kinda is wearing?" She said, "Yeah, let me call him. I'm his wife." I said, "How do these things happen to me?" So she calls him, says, "There's a man over here wants to talk to you." He said, "Okay, I'm coming up the hill." So I asked her for her hat. I asked for a hat like it. She said, "I don't have a hat." But I walked to the SUV and get you a shirt. So she went and got me that shirt. They weren't giving away shirts. So she went and got me this shirt given by her. Nice lady. And I got him to sign. I like that. That doesn't count now. Anyway, he signed this for me, and I kinda, I gotta, I'll tell you what, I won't get my fiddle. He signed this, and I thought it had some meaning, 'cause it's a massage heart, you know? I took that to mean something. Okay. What I really want to talk to you about is, and I know I don't talk about it much, but I'm in court, as you know, because of my hat. So I was in court on Wednesday, and the judge was gonna think about what I had to do. But this is what we're important about. What we're important about is the coroner couldn't be there, and she said, "I'm planning something out of town, and my training..." Guess where she went? She went to Dearborn, Michigan, to a training about legal pathologists and all this kind of stuff. Costs about $2,200. In Dearborn, Michigan, I call it state training? Nothing to do with that. She hadn't even been to all her classes in Georgia to go to them. So I just want you to know that I'm volunteering, because I think they're gonna have one in Hawaii, and I'd like to escort her over there, if I'll pay for it. And I assure you, when I go there, I'm not coming back, 'cause I got plenty of relatives on Maui. So, the other thing is a newspaper article. She's credited me with the judge signing an order about her doing her job. Isn't that what I've been trying to talk about for the last two years, doing her job? And Judge Emerson, our top judge, signed an order. She said in here that I had something to do with it. She called it a political complaint. I wish I could take credit for it, but before she said that, she got a letter in 2017 from Judge Walker to do her job. Listen. She fired the best man she had, Mr. Rogers, who was there. So all I'm trying to say is I told this man that I want to come over there and talk to him about someone who's pulling the Democratic Party down.
Right. Mr. Pierce?
Yes, ma'am.
Your three minutes have expired.
Okay.
Okay, so just if you could just wrap up, so we can finish.
Thank you. Please read it now.
Okay, I thought you were gonna wrap your sentence up, but thank you so much, Mr. Pierce. We'll take this matter into advisement. Next, we'll move on. We have Torian Harrington. Please come forward and give us your address. Our subject matter is Community Service Board. Did I pronounce your name right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is it Torian?
Yeah, it's Tar.
Oh, you're Torian. Okay, you can give us your address, state your address, and your subject matter is Community Service Board, and you have three minutes, so please, you can proceed if you just state your name again and give me your address.
Yeah, my name is Torian Harrington. My address, 4323 Kellner Court, Douglasville, Georgia, 30135.
Okay, thank you.
I'm up here today to represent, um, choice of the Douglas program out of Douglasville, Georgia. And we, um, get out in the community, and we go out and go to the park, we go to different restaurants, and it's just a program to help grow, um, to help a person grow in developmental ways. It's a disability type program for disability people and things like that. And, uh, it's just a program where, you know, I think it's been helping me grow, and it's gonna help me achieve whatever I need to achieve out here to be successful.
Okay. Thank you so much. Do you have a comment, ma'am?
Uh, I just want to say we're, it trusts us to Douglas, and it's considered the WOW program, Windows Without Walls. I mean, Walls Without... I'm sorry, I apologize.
World Without Walls.
Walls Without Walls. Okay, and, um, basically, what we do is we, um, assist with individuals who have mild intellectual and physical disabilities. So we, for parents that do work, we do provide a daycare center that allows them to not be home alone. So, that's what we are.
Okay. Thank you so much. We'll take this matter into advisement, and this is attached to the Community Service Board.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Sharon Bachel. Bachel, I hope I didn't ruin your name.
Bachel.
Bachel. Please come forward. Your subject matter is Fox Hall. Restate your name and give us your address for the record.
Sharon Bachel, at six, I live at 6331 South Skyline Drive, District Three. And before I begin, I would just like to say the Board needs to consider moving the date or the day of their meeting to a day other than Monday, because there's no place to park. And I think that discourages people from coming, participating if they can't find a place to park and had to walk from across the street. And I'm an old lady. The thing I want to talk about is Fox Hall. I'm gonna read this, because I think a five-hour meeting is too long, and it'll go faster if I read it.
Yes, ma'am.
The transparency of this board for the Fox Hall issue has not been good. Why is this being rushed through? I have attended two Town Hall meetings this year, and the subject of Fox Hall was not brought up. The work session video for the presentation was delayed, and only it's been available for a week. I saw no articles in Sentinel, but I didn't receive my paper Saturday, so there might have been something Saturday, I don't know. I just, uh, think my tax dollars paid for a $15,000 study that I have not been able to see, and I really don't think I've been informed on it very much by what was on video. I don't, really don't understand the presentation that well. I just don't think the guy who did the survey adequately explained if it was a good or a bad deal. I sent an email to my commissioner, but I've not received a reply or an acknowledgement, so I don't even know, you know, what her opinion is on it. If Fox Hall is such a good deal, then why weren't they able to get foreign or private investors in this good economy? I'm sure they did studies, just as our company did, as far as infrastructure, why does Fox Hall get sewers and I don't? I've lived in county over 30 years, but they get priority over me. This business doesn't want to pay taxes for 99 years. If I understand what the proposal was, that is out of line. They talked about paying SLOs tax, but they base their figures on full occupancy, which won't happen every day. The businesses in Douglasville will not benefit as much as they say they will from Fox Hall. Fox Hall, most of the businesses that will benefit will be Fulton County, because people will be coming from the airport. Can our roads handle any more traffic? We need to fix the roads first. I think the BOC should have informed the public better on what is happening with Fox Hall, and they should say no to Fox Hall demands. It is not a good deal.
Thank you, Ms. Bachel. Thank you so much. We'll take this matter into advisement. Appreciate you coming in today. Next, we have Mr. John Tomasky. Mr. Tomasky, if you could please come forward and give us your, restate your name and give us your address, and your subject matter is, just give us your subject matter. Can't leave this matter. Community Service 101, I believe. Please, you have the floor.
All right, thank Chairman Jones, and a morning to everyone, and in particular to Judge McLean, who I personally observed several years ago to be a justice of great patience and restraint, and I would say even more so legally. My subject is PoliSi 101, and it provides context within which one can understand political issues, especially the real politic that goes back to Audubon Bismarck of the 1880s. And in general, individuals get involved in politics either as elected officials or simply as party members, to some combination of interest in the general welfare and personal benefits, be they tangible or intangible. And I'll leave it to you all to decide for yourselves, any given politician or party member, to what extent are they motivated by self-interest or altruism, but understand that that is the context. People are in it for a variety of reasons, and they can be more or less selfish or altruistic. The lady who just spoke, I think she has a pretty good grasp of things, even though she confessed not to being in full command of the issue. She seems very astute to me, and it seems she also understands the issue of self-interest in politics. Now, in this county, and in the state generally, there had been, up to about a generation ago, one party in power, and it behaved in a somewhat omnipotent way, and it really brought forth its own demise. Recently, in this county, there's been a change in power, and it's obvious in three superficial ways, one, one party being majority on the county commission to another. Also, the demographics have changed, both in terms of so-called race and men going from the majority to minority on the commission. And at this point, you have new people, some of whom have come from hundreds of miles away, rather than the multi-generational people who had been here before. So, one thing that gets into it is, people who have been here for generations, they pretty much have their boundaries of interest set, and they'll push and tug against each other, but everybody pretty much goes with the status quo. New people come in, they have ambition, they have a hunger, and there's a different dynamic. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tomasky. Appreciate you coming in today. We'll take this matter into advisement. Last but not least, we have Ms. Darlene Sheldon, Sharon. Ms. Darlene, please come forward, give us your address and your subject matter this morning. I may be to read yours, as it's mental health.
Good morning. My name is Darlene Sheardon. I live at 3436 Spring Bridge Drive here in Douglasville, and I'm also here about the Community Service Board. I am the Director of the Midway Community Resource Center, and our logo is Love in Action by Helping, Connecting, and Serving. And the way we do that, we use a lot of the resources here in Douglas County, and we are proud to say that we are now the only county station of hope. The Station of Hope is set up for returning citizens. We are interested in making sure that they're not back in jail again, going back through the revolving doors. So we're very active in seeing that we have programs available to help these type of citizens. We work closely with Carol Chateau of Community Supervision. We work closely with Lisa Williams of the Sheriff's Department with their reentry program, and we are working with the Community Service Board. So this board is very vital to prevention of problems, because now we have the resources available to help many citizens of all races, genders, whatever it is. Mental health is a very serious problem, and we know one in four at least have a mental health issue of some type. So for this Community Service Board, I'm asking that whatever funding is necessary, that we do so until the state is able to step in and to assist with the Douglas County Community Service Board. I also work with the Douglas County Task Force. I've been a volunteer on the sexual and abuse hotline for several years. So I get to see a lot of the different issues we have in this community. The Resource Center, again, is there to connect, help, and serve for Douglas County and also the city of Douglasville. So I'm asking you to really consider doing whatever's necessary, that we can keep the Douglas County mental health services here in Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharon. Thank you so much. We will take this matter into advisement, and we appreciate you. Board Commissioners, I'm gonna make a few adjustments, so this meeting can move quickly. Should I say move? We can move along today. I want to just move to tab number, where it says approval of the minutes. I want you all to take a look at your minutes for tomorrow, and please be sure to look at those, so we can coordinate. And then tab number four is proclaiming the month of May to 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Douglas County, and that will be read by Ray Leifert, who's the Director of Operations for the CSP here in Douglas County. And then also, I'll just, and then I'll stop here, and then I'll pivot back up to our presentations. We have two presentations today. One is SLOs Update, and that's Mr. Terry Gable. If you could come forward, I want to do that as well. I'm just trying to see what you're gonna do.
Keep it tight.
Keep it tight. There you are. Mr. Gable, thank you so much for coming in today, and we are looking forward to your presentation.
Got a little concerned, we wouldn't be able to fire it up here. Thank you. My name's Terry Gable. I'm in the morning out of the belly. I'll be doing the SLOs update for the May report. David Goodbe doing a short presentation on vendors at the time of meeting. At the end of the presentation, I'll give you a quick update for the vendors. So with that, this is May 1st report, so I'll be reporting on the March revenues and also the work through April for the SLOs program. This is our normal SLOs pie chart showing the total invoice amount for, through April. So out of a hundred, the $100 million program, we're right at $25 million that's been invoiced out. It's around 25% of the work as we move into the beginning of SLOs year three in April. If you break that down by a program element, the fire and EMS is around 13.8 million. The shares in that, that's been invoiced out. Transportation's at 7.3 million, and parks and wrecks at right at 1.7 million. So when looking at our revenues, we continue to see some pretty solid numbers coming in, and we were fortunate, and we ended the SLOs year two with a good revenue amount. It ended, March ended up being the third highest for the SLOs year two. We were right at about 2.3 million dollars. So there was a good end to it, and it'll obviously be a good, a good start for SLOs year three. And I'll just go through the totals with you. So both SLOs year one and SLOs year two, we collected about $49.3 million, which provides us with an overage of about 1.2 million dollars as we go into SLOs year three. Hopefully, we can maintain that, and the revenues will stay up, and the economy will continue to be progressing, and folks getting out and spending some money. And if we just look at SLOs year two, which really did get the program out, all the numbers came in fairly solid. We got a couple months that were planned, which is a little bit odd, it was actually through some of the holidays. But we ended, the hard number for the March was 2.66 million. If you compare the total revenues with the projections for year two, we were about 1.6 million, $6 million overs for the revenue. So, good news as we go into, again, our third year of the SLOs program. And I left this up, so for, we made the final payment for SLOs year two on the bond obligation, $16.3 million. That was made in April. As we move into SLOs year three, I'll, I'll show those new numbers up in my next report, and that'll be our highest payment, highest payment for the repayment on the payment obligation. It'll be around $20 million for SLOs year three. Of course, that'll affect our paid old money as we move through the, through the year. And then giving some quick updates on the projects themselves, here's the projects that have been completed for the Chief. Really no change from our last report. We will be adding Fire Station Three, hopefully next month. We've got the crew in, and everything should be lined up to get that project completed totally. I'll just give a quick, quick update on that when I get to it. The county-wide digital radio system is on schedule, I'm glad to report. We're still, we're still holding on to the October 31st deadline for the year. Motorola, at this point, thinks they can hit that target date. We had the last three parcels that slowed the project down as far as getting all the site towers completed. Six of nine towers are completely done. The three that will remain, took a little bit more time in trying to get the paperwork negotiated out with those. Two of those sites are under construction. It's all still gas and factory shows. And then the one that we have not started on is the one down at South Douglas. We're in, at this point, we're at the final, the final stage of it, is to get Chipo approval for it. That's from what I'm hearing from Jay Roberts with Motorola. Everything's looking positive for that. One good news is, is once they get an agreement from them, everything's worked out, they can start work, and then the final paperwork can be done at a later date. So, we're all, again, we on schedule with the project. At some point, I'll be getting Motorola in here, give us a more in-the-weeds update on where they're at. And I think I'll wait till we're a little bit closer to finalizing all the nine sites to kind of hit that milestone date. So I'm thinking that's probably gonna be either next month, no later than July. I'll get him in here and give a good update, and Jay's gonna wanna show us some pictures, I'm sure, of all the good work they've done. So, real quick, moving through some equipment for the Chief, the ambulance, we got one ambulance for 2019. It's been piggybacked on last year's contract, so it's already been ordered. And then the, we got one fire truck for 2019, and that, the proposal for advertising will be going out in June for proposals back in on the proposed fire truck. Those are moving as we would expect. And then finally, Station Three renovations. The crew has moved back into the building, just doing some final touch-ups, looking at getting possibly some new furnishings in the building. That's the main thing going on now, with some small touch-ups from the contractor. So everything's looking good there, and I mentioned to the Board previously that we're planning on, and David Goodbe is working with Rick, and doing a ribbon cutting on Fire Station Three sometime over the next couple, two or three weeks. So we're looking forward to that, and getting that, that building completely done, and letting, letting the Chief's crew take full control over it. Staff vehicles is three trucks that were on the Chief's list for the 2019. One's been ordered, and they're in the process of specing out the other two, and we'll get those ordered as well. I've got Station Nine up here, as you know that, as far as the construction of Station Nine, and we got that program now a couple of years, but we are, we're on moving forward with engaging Alan Bell, who was the architect who did the original design for it. They did some elevation plans for it with the Chief to start getting some ideas on what they wanted. We're gonna be meeting back with them soon to make sure they understand completely what we're looking for in the, in Station Nine, and then we'll be getting some calls from them to give us some actual design work. So it's possible we could be looking at doing the design for the fire station this year, and then we'll, once we get it designed, then we can start getting some hard numbers on estimates and making sure we know that we're gonna put this in overall program. And then with that, I'll wrap up. That wraps up the fire for now. Any questions?
No, no.
Fire?
Not this time. Keep moving.
Moving into transportation, there's the, again, there's the projects that have been completed, and no chance for Miguel as we, as we move into, in the June, May, June. The resurfacing program, C W Matthews was awarded the 2019 resurfacing for this year. They did, they were able to get started early, much earlier than last year. One of the big projects on their list was Lee Road, the rehab of Lee Road and resurfacing. That work was done, completed within about a week and a half. So they did a good job, got in and did a road that was certainly necessary and needed to be done as quickly as possible, as bad a shape as it was in. So they'll complete, continue doing their resurfacing. They have pulled out, but they'll be back in, from what Miguel's telling me, in July. We'll see them back in here and finishing out. With 2019, we did combine our L-Meg and our SLOs list, so it's a fairly big contract this year, around 5.9 million dollars, so it was a nice sizable resurfacing contract. The payment evaluations are going on very well. We have made some good progress. When the weather finally broke, we've got District Four, Three, and are completed, basically, and District Two is about 50% complete. We're hoping to get the rest of the remaining fieldwork done over, probably during the month of June, and then we'll be working with Miguel on the program and developing it, developing everything that that program can put out in July, and then wrapping everything up towards the end of July. So we're on progress there. Everything's going well. I got a few things that've come up, and nothing major, that we'll be working with Miguel on to get everything ironed out with those. Stewart River Road, design is ongoing. We are very close, and Jacobs is very close in getting the plans completely done for this. We'll probably move into June with that, and then they'll be focusing on getting roadway plans finalized for Miguel. Miguel's staff can go out and start roadway purchases on it. That's probably gonna take, that'd be a three or four month progress, we're thinking. So we're looking for this project to be led sometime in the fall, depending on the complications and difficulties in getting all the roadway acquired for it. But good news is, it is moving, moving forward, and we hope to see it, it out for construction towards the end of the year. And Bright Star Road at John West, this project will be one of the two that we'll, Miguel's telling me, and he's on track right now, getting And Bright Star Road at John West, this project will be one of the two that we'll, Miguel's telling me that he's on track right now getting let in June. All the roadway's been purchased on it. Miguel's just finalizing what he needs to get the project set up for letting. And the other one that will be letting in June, both these needed projects and long awaited is Sweetwater Church. This is the one where we partnered with Paulin County in with getting this project let. Paulin County can design on it and Douglas County be putting it out for bid. And then also the costs will split between these two counties. But this project's ready to go and Miguel's got that on his queue to let that in June also. So Chapel Hill Road Intersection, this is our bigger project for intersection improvements that we are working on. It's being designed by SEI. We had an open house public information meeting just a couple of weeks ago, April twenty-third. Had a great turnout. I think a lot of people interested in the project, obviously. And SEI was there and Miguel did a good job of presenting that. So we needed that to make sure we got full input from the people living on the roadway. Miguel had some visuals of the typical section for the roadway. As far as getting their comments back, now that we've got that done, that was the target that SEI needed to move forward. They now know what they need as far as the final design on it. And they'll move into full design for the utilities right away in the roadway. And then we'll be designing that probably through the fall. And then hopefully about the end of the year before that, getting Miguel the roadway plans and things Miguel has expressed. That's going to be, that project's going to be one of the long ones as far as acquiring the number of parcel that it's going to take to get that, to get that third lane in and out through there. So we're just moving along at this point as expected. The Highway Five project, Douglas Boulevard, this is the right turn lane, the north right, northbound right turn lane on the five at Douglas Boulevard. Again, a much needed project. We've got, Miguel went out for proposals for design consultants to come in and assist with several projects, actually, that he's going to be using them for. This will be one of them. As soon as he gets, and those contracts finalized, notice the proceed issue, this will be the first ones, I'm sure Miguel's got it, that he'll be given and get started with this project and get it designed. Once we get it designed, the main thing with this project's going to be knowing the roadway impact and the utility impact. Those will be the two big factors with it. Obviously, it's just the right turn lane, but it's in a very busy intersection, as most of you know. And the utilities and the roadway are going to be fairly expensive. Post-Road Bridge at Dog River, no change here. Contractor's still working his way towards Douglas County. Miguel is, he keeps updating us on a small parcel that's come up that he's working with GDOT on and trying to get it settled. It doesn't sound like it's too complicated. So hopefully, that will get resolved very soon. And obviously, we have time with the contractor working his way toward Douglas. We're thinking he's going to be it towards the end of the year and Miguel's thinking he'll have that parcel closed by then. And getting into our sidewalk projects, I know these, we're still pushing SEI to get these projects done. They're smaller projects, but as most any transportation project, there's always a process we got to go through. The design is basically completed. We're meeting with Miguel next Tuesday to look at the finer details of. We have a couple of parcels that were impacted for roadway and we've got some easements that are going to be needed. We're going to try to fine tune that, but we're basically in the roadway phase here with this. Once we get through next Tuesday and Miguel can get some more definitive direction to SEI, we'll be moving into getting these projects completely designed and getting the roadway. Hopefully, there won't be any, what we, possibly we can ask some things through the contract to reduce the roadway impact. So both of these will be, I'm still thinking of June, June letting again, depending on the amount of roadway. And then the last, the last one that's, that we're currently working on of the sidewalk projects is New Manchester High School on Ninety-two. There's no roadway that we've got to acquire there or easements. Biggest thing there is, and I've mentioned in the past, is we had to do a PET study. We had to get SEI to do a PET study. That was done last week, which was fairly critical because of the time that the school would need to be done when school was in. And then that'll be submitted to GDOT on encroachment permit. So that'll be the one thing out there that'll slow that project down is it'll have to work through GDOT's utility office to get the encroachment permit. Once that's done, this project will be ready to go out for bid too. Whitestone Culvert, the contractor has been awarded the contract. Obviously, we're waiting on the final paperwork and those proceeds to be given to him. And then there'll be a pre-construction meeting and they'll get started with, again, a much needed culvert to go in out there. It's been out for several years. This is the safety projects that we, one of the safety projects that we broke out from the front from Anoakee. This will be just identified various locations, including I-20 ramps to go in and add some lighting in the areas I think, one of them is fairly dark at night. So we're working with, right now, Greystone and George Power to get some cost in for that. Once those come in, we'll be able to develop a scope and look and see where we're at as far as dog was and hopefully be able to get some of those going pretty quick here. Highway Ninety-two at Mountain Burning Road, this is the one we're needed back, badly needed intersection for a traffic signal. We've been in, Miguel and Mark, both ongoing discussions with GDOT. Paperwork has been submitted for a project with them, to partner with them to do a signal there. We're just, we're trying to work with that, get that expedited as quick as we can and get it approved. Hopefully, GDOT are sharing some of the cost and we'll get that signal up. We just got to get some target dates from GDOT and see exactly where they're at with it. And then the Highway Ninety-two Riverside Parkway Signal. And this will really depend on what's feasible and what the warrants will show out there. But this will be another project like the Highway Five at Douglas Boulevard that Miguel will tap into some of the, who's ever awarded, which consultants awarded the design contracts. And this will be another project that he'll get them on and do a feasibility study, try to determine exactly what's needed out there and what can be done and still meet GDOT warrants for the intersection. And our Lee Rook Road lighting project, which again, has a long history with GDOT. Right now, the project's basically ready to go with roadway and plans. And we're looking for GDOT to confirm a funding year for it. Douglas County has their match that we, we're committing right now, eleven million dollars out of SLOSS money. And then once GDOT confirms a funding year, Miguel will be ready, I'm sure, set to go to get that project let. We're thinking now either twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one is what we're expecting from GDOT. And that finishes up transportation. Any questions at this point?
We're going to wait until the end of your presentation.
Parks, that's the completed projects. Again, no change there. And hopefully, again, like the fire with the chief, we'll be adding the Boundary Waters concession building in the next report. The concession building out at Boundary now is basically completed. Integrated, it's just some final things inside that we're landscaping last week. So that tells you the project's pretty much done. Greystone has finally got its power out there several weeks ago, so we're good to go there. That project's will be wrapping, it'll be wrapping up within probably this week or next week. And hopefully, we'll be looking at possibly ribbon cutting on this project too. And then the adjacent project that we had with that was the Boundary Waters Soccer Field Lights. Those have been done, George, West Georgia Lighting, tennis courts project early in the year. And we were just waiting on Greystone to get the power out there. We'll stay done. All I've got to do now is get the tests set up, but we must go for the lights. And this project will be ready to turn back to the county and activate it in fields. So Deerlick Park Tennis Courts, we're moving forward and the board approved last month for integrated to do the demo work out there. So we're going to move forward with going out and removing the old tennis courts and getting the old buildings out and stabilizing that area. We're finalizing the design. Carter Watkins is telling me they should have the project, the design on it finished this, going into June. We're going to put that project out for bid and see where the bids come in. Right now, it's looking like, based on some early cost estimates, that we're going to be over what was budgeted. So we talked with Mark and Gary last week and it's the best decision we've came up with right now is to go ahead and put this project out for bid and just see where we're at to make sure we know exactly what the construction costs will be on. So we'll go ahead and demo it, get it designed, and then we'll get it out on the street for bid and see where the bids come in at. The multi-purpose rec center is in the final stages of design, glad to report that. Sutton Architects is telling us probably the end of June, July. We're just working through some final details with him on the, some of the security system and items like that. Getting those details worked out. So this is keeping us on schedule for what we thought we finished the design in June, July. Still showing July thirty-first, twenty twenty completion date on yet. And the senior center's right behind it. They're just about tag team. So we'll have two minor projects that'll be on the street late summer. This one may be let before, not as big a building, this one may be let before the rec center. But again, Carter Watkins is in the final stages with this, doing the same thing. We're working through the IT and the audio, video details of buildings. And once we get those details worked out, we'll be ready to put them on, put them out on the street. The Deal Park and Fair Play Concession Building. You'll remember both these projects were, right now, we had bid out, we just bid out the concession building for both these parks. We've got bids in, we've had some good bids, probably some awardable bids based on budget, but they're still under review. They'll be presented to the Parks Committee and recommendations come out of there to make some final decisions on moving forward with that. Obviously, the Deerlick or our tennis courts is another one we need to get to a point where we got a bid on it too to look at, look and see how it's impacting on budget. So those bids are in. And then finally, I think this is the last one, is the Fair Play Park Lights, which this work was completed, it's been completed. We're waiting on, as we did at Boundary Soccer Field Lights, waiting on Greystone to set that transformer. The county's done everything we needed to do as far as easements and applications. They've got all that. Once they get the transformer set and we can, we can get power on the lights, we'll file those up and test them just like we're doing at the ones at Boundary Water. So with that, we can, I can take questions on my part?
Okay, board commissioners, we have some questions. Vice Chairman Rob Simmons, you have it.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'll be very quick. I recognize that I've got a pretty long session, so duly noted. Real quick, I want to back up to the numbers. And I appreciate our, one, for our citizens being here and giving their comments earlier. Again, I do hear, and to the broader community who approved this SLOSS is greatly appreciated, which is why I'm going to draw this comparison. Because one of our citizens provided a great context for history. Currently in this current SLOSS, and weigh in on this, I want to take you, be quick, but I'm going to take you through this. You said two point three million dollars is what we generated in March. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
All right, all right. And Michelle, you're here, you're in the number one spot today because Jennifer Hall and our director is not here, so flow with me for a minute. All right, so the two thousand nine SLOSS, if I recall, what, about one point seven five is what we need to pay off the bond every month, month? We got our bogey?
I would say.
Something like that, all right. What is the current amount? What is our current bond structure that we need to pay?
We need one point three million each month to pay off bonds.
One point three, all right. So listen, one point seven is the last SLOSS back in two thousand nine. We spent a hundred twenty million dollars on a jail, followed with one seven five. This one is same amount of money, give or take. We're going to talk about the different categories. And we only had to hit, what, one point three? All right, very good. All right. With that being said, though, the question becomes, okay, but what do we get for our dollars? Right? So this is, this is for those who have been here a long time and for those who are here new. It's about exchange, all right? So if I compare, and if we, the largest thing we've got on there is what, probably the, is a single item, is what, the tower and about what?
The tower's a radio.
About twelve million, give or take?
Fifteen.
Fifteen million, then followed by what, the community center, senior center? I think our appropriation for economic development is probably about ten million, give or take, right? All right, last SLOSS, we spent ten million dollars on twenty-nine acres of that jail. Ten million for twenty-nine acres. Now for that same dollar, what, I can put a tower up, community center up, senior center, et cetera. This is important for the current citizens who voted for this SLOSS, right? That jail did make us safer. It did increase our quality of life. It made eight hundred people comfortable. I appreciate our law enforcement. They deserve a better office, no problem all day long. But this is important. Like, but every now and then it's like, okay, I get all that stuff when you so internally focus on government. And I want y'all to be critical of us as leaders. Like, everything can't be about government. It can't be about new toys for staff. It can't be, every now and then you want to experience your tax dollars on a daily basis. I want to see it. I want to experience it. So, which is why I appreciate Commissioner Mitchell, who helped us really shape what this current SLOSS was about. We had too much concentration in maybe transportation. He whittled it out. He increased it for parks, right? Look at where your dollars are going, right? How do your families relate to the dollars that is being spent? We'll talk later about some of the other, some of the things that are pending, but this is important to understand where your dollars are. All right, so let me get to my question. I want to just give context. So, all right, so back to roads, you're rating the roads. You said that you've done District Four, the largest, District Four has the largest geographical area on all four mission districts, right? It's pretty much raw land, all future, I've got the most bits, I'm far east, that's far west, okay. So you've done that, you've done us, but District Three, haven't quite got to my colleague from the first district yet. All right, so here's my question, and Miguel is in here. What would it take to pave every road in this county? And will this study give me that number? In other words, it's great, again, we've got great equipment, great everything, but the citizens, like the lake said, well, what would it take to put sewer in my yard? Now, I know everybody don't want it. Some people want to stay, remain rural. But everybody don't want to remain rural. I mean, I don't mind being rural, but can I at least get some water and sewer out here that's not over septic? Can I get like, can I get a little upgrade? All right, so everything's not far right. Sometimes things are right center, all right? Follow me. All right, so Miguel?
Yes, sir.
All right, you're here. All right, Miguel, weigh in for me. Will this project give us, answer the question, first of all, how many road do we have in the county, if you know? How many roads, how many center miles? And will this study that we did by amending our contract with Worthing, which was the right thing to do, to come up with, I mean, not just when I hear people say, well, why is always District Two? Well, I mean, I advocated for that, but that's okay. But the question is, now we want to advocate for everybody, right? So since sometimes we pause sometimes on advocacy. Just advocate for the whole thing. What would it take?
Okay, this exercise, this analysis will put us in a position to know what the cost of doing the entire county is. Now, I don't have that figure in my head yet because part of the analysis is going to be looking at roads that are in no bad condition and say, okay, those roads need to be reconstructed. It will look at roads that are in better condition and say, well, those you can do some preventative maintenance on. So there's going to be a mixture of different types of approaches, different remedies for the conditions out there. But I can tell you this, we have over seven hundred miles of roads in the county. A typical county of this size, if you were able to put about, say, ten to twelve million dollars into resurfacing, it would take you twenty to twenty-five years to go through. it would take you twenty to twenty-five years to go through the county, if that puts you in perspective. So it is a massive amount of funding. The infrastructure, you're, you're close to a billion dollars' worth of infrastructure, I would tell you.
Okay. All right, so let me make sure, all right, so if it took you, or Lee Road, if it takes two and a half miles, just easy math, two and a half miles, we know that cost, what about half million, right?
Six hundred.
All right, make it half million, make it easy for, for easy math. Because I know you, you had to reinforce it because of the density, okay? But, so half million dollars, so half million dollars, two and a half, so ten miles equals what? Um, two million?
Did I do that right?
Yes. I'm, I'm accurate. Two million, four times five is two million. So for ten miles, and now we gotta get up to seven hundred miles, all right? So I'm, I'm thinking, oh, you're talking about a big number.
I came up with a hundred million, that's ballpark figure, just to resurface. That doesn't include patent, doesn't include, uh, milling, doesn't include.
All right, and so we just, I'm, a hundred million, so a jail for a hundred twenty, all the roads in the county, same number all, and recognizing we haven't built it in. It's about priorities. Priorities. Everybody in this county, no matter how much you pay in sales tax, property tax, you could have your road paved. It's based on priority of your elected officials. We made this an important part of our administration, to pave roads. They were negligible. I get calls from my citizens like, Mr. Robinson, don't fund that, Lee Road, I've been out here for forty years. I can tell y'all how long y'all, y'all ain't never did it. I get it. All right, there is history here. But there's also, I just wanted, and I'm, this is my only point, I only want to talk about this, which is, roads are important. Infrastructure, whether it's at the federal level or at the local level, we're saying, look, we, we're gonna do our part with what we got. We can't do it all, and we ain't gonna do it all in our administration, at least, at least not my term, um, during this time period. Because as you say, we can't swallow that whole thing at one time. Uh, but we can make a good chunk at it. We, we can do it, like, and we ask the citizens to be patient, we're coming. We're lining it up, we're setting priorities, we did this road rating, that was important. I hear sometimes we, people ask, well, why do you spend money on studies? Well, that makes our, the quality of our decisions better. Get input. We're, we're not gods, we're not deities. We've gotta go around and we've gotta get experts in here so we can make wise decisions. So it costs money for professionals. But at the end of the day, we want to make it a better place for everyone. We, we've gotta do this right, and I do appreciate staff and, I mean, working with the rigor that this administration is under, but it is appreciative, and I just had to make that statement, because we don't want it, I know this gets long, but it's important. That's where your money is being spent, and so we have to be accountable. So that was it. I just wanted one thing, ma'am chair, I yield to my colleagues.
Thank you. Anybody else or any, any other comments from board commissioners? Oh, Commissioner. DeGale?
Just, uh, one question, one quick question. Why is it taking so long for Greystone to, to, uh, well, hook up the lights?
How?
Yes.
It, when it's a process, just like we described, just like the roads, but it, it's, um, I don't know if I can answer that. It is a matter of getting them, you know, making the first initiative, contacting them, which we did, in both those fields, at Boundary and at Fair Play, and getting their, their, the, the engineer that carries that region down to the site. He looks at it, he makes some preliminary judgments on it, and then you got, you gotta work through the process. And in both these cases, we had to get easements. And that, that's just a, it just adds a little bit of time, it's not that much to them, but it, you know, it has to go before the board. Uh, they, they have to be approved, it has to be approved, and then it's, and then it's gotta be sent back Greystone. They have to schedule a crew to come back out. So they've been, it's been averaging about two or three months to, to work through. From the time we initiate contact with them and say that we need, we're gonna need a new transformer here for this new building, it's been, it's been two or three months, uh, to get through that process.
And that it will be done before the ball, ball comes into?
Yeah, yes, the, the lights, I'm expecting Greystone out there any day now. Everything, they've had it now, uh, the actual work will take just a day or two. But yes, I fully expect those, the lights to be powered up. Now you may have, you may have a building under construction, um, something that Gary and I'll need to be, uh, working with very closely here, that, with this, close with those bids. Um, but we got that same situation with Dilvar too, so.
And on the concession stand, how long do you think it will take to, uh, construct the concession stand?
Both of those buildings, um, indications we got from the bids were, um, were five months for both, both buildings.
So it is gonna run into the next season, the ball season? Have y'all made any, uh, as a county and maybe out to directors to give, are we making some kind of, uh, plans so that they will have some kind of, uh, concession stand and restrooms and stuff like that?
Yes. We've been talking with them and discussing the schedule with them and what their alternatives would be.
All right. So they, they're aware that they're gonna have to have some kind of temporary, uh, uh, concession stand and restroom probably, yeah?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
I yield back. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Just a couple of them. So you mentioned that, uh, we had one of the highest, uh, in March, uh, with?
Third highest.
Third highest.
For the year. For the Slos year two.
Right. And what was that number again, was it one point two or something?
Uh, it's two point, round up a little bit, two point three.
Two point three. But that puts us in the, in the, I guess, the green.
Oh, yeah, sure. For, um, well, we're looking at both Slos years now to buy, as we move into the third year, uh, we're about one point three million dollar overage.
That's, okay, okay, got, got. Okay, well, that, that's, that's a great look, and I, and I continue to encourage our, um, citizens to kind of continue to shop and buy more. Okay, but my other question, though, let's go to the digital radio side of things. Uh, my first question, though, I know we were upping that budget about fifteen mill, I think it was sixteen mill, or somewhere in that ballpark. How are we looking even with six of the, even with six of the nine towers, uh, done, or, or, how, how are we looking budget-wise? Are we still coming in under budget? I know we did, we made some adjustments, because there were a few things that was unforeseen that we didn't, that, that the chief brought to our attention somewhere down the road, but how are we looking at that fifteen mill?
We're still in the black, we, we have eaten into that, uh, there was about, I'm gonna say roughly a million dollars. We've added, you know, they've given us some credits and we, we've added some things. We've eaten into it a little bit, but not, not too much.
Right, so we still, we still, uh, got, uh, possibly up some, some dollars that are gonna be returned back?
Yes, at this point.
Okay, okay, good. And that particular one tower that we've got further out west, um, with the pastor, please explain to us kind of where we are with that and, and how, I mean, I know you said we're gonna move forward, but kind of share with the public kind of how we're gonna move with that, though.
So we, we're able to, to get a site, um, you know, that was a second choice, I think, Martin, wasn't that correct?
Yeah.
So that, that, that's, again, that's, that's been probably our little sticker point for it, but, uh, at, at the point we're at right now, Motorola has went through several of the permits already, but Chippewa, the historical, uh, is what's remaining right now. Um, and it is affected, it's impacting some of the, uh, the equipment, uh, that some changes they're having, they're asking them to do. So there's some negotiation going on between the county, Motorola, and, and Chippewa. The good news is, it is, you know, obviously it's held us up to this point so far, is that the heat feels very, Jay Nick's feels very good. They're very close to, to agreeing on everything. Um, and that, once they do that, uh, the actual process, the work through all that, it's gonna take, uh, some time, but they'll allow them to go in and start work.
Yeah.
Which is what he's looking for. He's ready, he's ready to go.
Easement and the agreement with Turk, all that's been completed.
Okay, yeah.
We've finished all that.
Yeah, so, so even though we've got somewhat of a hiccup, there's nothing that's gonna, that's gonna throw the project off, because my, at least our anticipation is that this project will be hopefully started to be tested and/or up and operational roughly when?
Um, so we hope to start testing it in August, is the target date. And that would mean all the towers are completed by then, um, a hundred percent completed. And then they'll start, start the testing, the chief and Dr. Chalmers, if you want to, but, but we still, the, the final target date for it to be completed is November first, and that, Jay keeps, uh, I think reassuring us that he's on track to do that.
And we're pretty much ahead of schedule based on, even with the tower situation, right?
Yeah, he's, he said that, in all of his experience with having to deal with actually acquiring properties like this, they, they've moved very well compared, you know, based on the experience he's had in, in Douglas County, and they have been able to move through the, through the, uh, the roadway parcels and, and it just, you know, that's obviously a lengthy process.
Yes.
And it's, it has not, it's not held him up. He's held the same schedule and still was able to get through that. So it's, um, he's, he's still very positive about it, and everything's on track.
Good, good. Uh, the Deerlick project, uh, tennis courts, um, if I, if I heard you correctly, we're gonna go in and demolish the tennis courts.
We're moving forward with that.
With that part of it, while at the same time, looking at someone to, uh, rebuild and, and, and put that, put it all back together and, and hopes that the numbers fit within the numbers that we've all discussed.
So it's, uh, it's, it's, you know, we hired Carter, Carter Watkins to design it. You know, we've got, there'd be, and there's a few other things out there required that, but they, they should get the design completed in June, and then we're, we're gonna put it, we're gonna put it up for bid.
Yeah, so.
And we have a hard, you know, a hard number, we know exactly what we got to deal with.
Right.
Um, and see if need, need to, what options we may have, if we need to do some.
And, and just for the general, general public purpose, please explain, and I don't know if Gary might want to explain this as well, why we went that route versus having it repaired, the tennis courts? I don't know who wants to kind of speak toward that. I know, and this is, I mean, I know, but I want the public to understand why we took this route.
They, they were just in such disarray in not only the lights, uh, but the fencing and the courts themselves. They had such large cracks in them, that if we tried to do any patching, those cracks would just reoccur. So we, we basically would be throwing good money after bad. If we had tried to, uh, piece mill it if we would, or patch.
Right.
Uh, it was, it was not a good option.
Right. So it, it, it was more cost efficient to take this route, to just demolish them, rebuild them back up and?
Well, I don't know about cost efficient, but it, it's definitely the best plan, because, uh, it's gonna cost obviously more money, uh, to rebuild the entire complex, but we would have not got a good result if we'd have tried to patch those large cracks or resurface, because they would reoccur.
So we'll be coming back, repatching and repairing again, so I?
Absolutely.
I call it cost efficient to kind of do it.
Yes, I, I agree with that.
Okay. Uh, all right, thank you. Uh, and last but not least, okay, the community center and the senior citizen center, you spoke about kind of where we are with that, and, uh, we're ahead of schedule. Are we still ahead of schedule, or we could be operational first quarter of next year, twenty twenty, or?
Uh, it's probably first quarter, second, first and second quarter.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay, so we, uh-oh.
Not operational.
Yeah, that.
It's a year build out.
Okay.
They're saying a year build out.
Yeah, operational.
You're looking at the third quarter.
Got it, okay, okay.
As added staff and, and fully operational.
Yeah, but, but we're, we're getting closer. I mean, we're, we're a little bit off time-wise, uh, but.
Not much, we, I mean, as far as what, uh, timeline that we had set initially, I, I've been real pleased. So as far as the design on them, we're gonna hit pretty much where we thought we would be. And then with the projections of the time, of how long it's gonna take to build them, get the build out, you are around, you are around June or July.
Yeah.
Um, and then it's gonna, it will take some time to get, get it up and operational.
Depending on what other course.
Got it, got it, got it. And last but not least, I know that was probably my last one, but this sidewalk projects. Uh, did I miss that, or, because of, I'm, I'm sure, did, did we talk about the sidewalk projects?
Yeah.
Are we with those sidewalk projects?
So I, and that, again, I, we, I've been working with SEI, they, they're doing the design on them. They, they pushing them and made them realize, you know, these are, we want to get these on, on the ground. These are the small projects, and when it's expressed to them, they're more concerned with that. So they, they have finished the design on it. The, the design is there. We're meeting with Miguel next Tuesday, um, but just because of the nature of the areas and where the sidewalks going, other than the high school, it's just about impossible to do it without some type, some form of temporary easement. And right now they're showing a little bit of sliver of roadway on both Chestnut and, um, and Lethy Springs. We're gonna look at that and see if we can't even try to, uh, reduce that impact to nothing. After the meeting Tuesday, I'm hoping we're, we're, we're going to even closer to getting this project out.
I know.
And getting it bid. I know it's been a lengthy process.
Yes.
It is, it is a process. And then, again, I, I, once you do the urban sections in these, these areas that haven't been touched, it's all, it's just difficult to do it without.
So, so we're looking for, we're looking for some easement concerns right now, that's where we are.
Yeah, temporary easements.
Right, temporary easements, yes.
I don't know if we're gonna be able to get around those.
Right, right, so, so we, we're working on that, Miguel, I guess, for?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and?
We're, we're trying to eliminate the need for easements. And sometimes you can incorporate certain elements into the client itself. Of course, you're a little more to do that, but then you're able to get up a property, private property. That's our goal, so that's, we're gonna have a meeting to discuss.
And I want you to be down time, so how, how do you eliminate it? By shifting and shifting it?
Well, you, you could sometimes, uh, install a, a buffer wall, or, you know, you may have the sidewalk going up against the wall, rather than adjusting the grade on the property behind it.
Got it, got it.
So elements like that, that may cost more on the construction side, but it gets us away from having to negotiate a price for the easement with the property owner. Just adds time to it.
Got it. And, and with that being said, though, let's say we took Plan B. Any ideas, have you guys thought about any potential costs, if Plan B is the route we take? Potential costs?
That's what we're gonna be discussing on Tuesday, what the implication would be of incorporating certain elements into the project.
All right, thank you. And I guess I'll wait to see David Good, his presentation, I may have a question or two from there, but I would yield back at the point.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Thank you so much, Mr. Gable, we appreciate your presentation, and next we have, follow me. Mr. Good, who's our director of communications for the Slos.
My name, thank you. Good morning. My name is David Good, I'm the communication director for, um, the Slos. And right here, um, as you see, the only thing that's different is I did not change the date, the, uh, the date is actually April thirtieth, twenty nineteen, not February twenty eighth. I mean, as you see, we have a total number of vendors of eighty-two, twenty-nine of them are within the, uh, within the county, twenty-five are right outside the county, and then you have another twelve that's within the state of Georgia, and then the rest of sixteen are out of the state of Georgia. Right now we have fifty-six active, uh, fifty-six, uh, projects. Twenty-eight of them are active, twenty-eight of them are completed. What you guys want to look at is that, in order to make a project active, it's must a PO has been established. Even though some, uh, somebody might actually get the contract, we don't necessarily activate on this end until a PO has been ordered. Uh, right now we're looking at, let's see, make sure I get my chart right. Okay. Uh, right now we're looking at, the way that we're doing everything is that you guys really putting emphasis on making sure we get local participation into this Flos. Now we want to make sure that we also got minority participation as well. So right now we're looking at, even though sixty-five percent of this Flos is from our side, from inside the county, within thirty, uh, miles, thirty-seven percent of them are actually going towards, on the money coming towards county. So we're still trying to make sure we have that one increased. Um, and right now, we actually have, these are the amounts inside of Douglas County. We're spending about one point three million for everyone in Douglas County. Right outside of Douglas County is like eleven point one million, and then when you think about the total vendors, all that is a little bit over twelve. Uh, for outside the state, right now we are looking at spending about eighteen million. Sixteen million of that is going towards Motorola. And that number is only based upon what was, first was budgeted, then we brought that number down to a little bit over fifteen million, because that amount is what they end up coming in as a purchase order. So once the purchase order is done, once they're completed, that number will, of course, end up coming down. In a new chart that we'll start putting out, we'll actually be on active projects. I kept it like this as long as Motorola was in, because it would skew it if I ended up putting that one out there. And of course, right now we are engaging, we always make sure we go to chamber events, talk to local businesses, and then, you know, make sure you participate, having actually, uh, classes out there, letting people know. Make sure you come in and become a vendor, how to become a vendor, making sure that you come to, uh, Bill's office and say that, hey, I'm a local Douglas County vendor. So we've been working on that. And then on the percentage of the minority contractors, I don't know why it didn't come up, but I was saying to that one, I'm not sure why it didn't come up on the tier. But over that one, right now, we're starting out being about nine percent when this Flos first started. Now we're at thirty-four percent of the Slos are going to, uh, minority businesses. And right now it's about nine of the twenty-nine, uh, project, active projects, nine of the twenty-eight active projects are actually going to, uh, minority owned. So that's where we are. Are there any questions?
Okay, any questions on the board, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yeah, I, I'll be pretty quick, and, and she mentioned, will help clarify this. We were talking about this, this morning in our Slos briefing, and it was this notion of- We were talking about this, this morning in our SLOSS briefing, and it was this notion of, again, citizens wanna know where their dollars are being spent. And, and, and though we do a lot of what I call busy communication, my question is, is it effective? And my question is, and I, I noticed that we have these stor-, these pretty storyboards, pretty pictures of, of, of something. Community centers, senior centers, et cetera. But they're housed within this room, which is cabinet members, right? It's, it's, we're talking to ourselves. We've got them down in Citizens Hall, which to, um, the citizen that earlier, well, everybody can't be here ten o'clock in the morning to see that. But I saw at least one to two hundred people coming in every court, that it would've been nice to show them at least where their tax dollars was going. Neither here nor there. Um, some, and some of you know about, sometimes you see churches that are being built, and you see on the side road coming soon. It could be three, four years, but nonetheless, it's a vision. What, what are you, again, I, I will yield, what are we doing to, to ensure the public, um, is notified? Everybody doesn't read this signal to get, um, you know, get that. Everybody doesn't look at DC twenty-three, everyone doesn't get Rick Martin's press releases per se, and everybody definitely ain't listening to five hours worth of this to get to the point they wanna hear where this stands. But can we get little things like, I mean, what are we doing to help get that message? Sometimes it's just the visual as opposed to I gotta read something or listen to something. What are we doing to do that? That's the only question I got, to ensure that where the big dollars are going, people know it's coming. I yield.
Well, uh, it's really, I call it a threefold. Of course, any time that there's a town hall meeting, we make sure that we actually put out the information. Whether they're with the boards, that you guys, different town halls, or they're at different events that's going, going on throughout the county. Cause I make sure that I go throughout the county and tell the people what's coming, especially those projects that are getting ready either online this year or will be completed, uh, within this year. Uh, we also make sure that we send out communications. I might have a listing of churches that I end up sending the information out through email. Um, we have social media plugs that go out there. There's one actually on Instagram, which is the two thousand sixteen SLOSS is on there. So we actually do that part of that, and whenever we run into people, we listen to them, well, why don't you come out to, you know, come out to our neighborhood and speak at one of our, uh, events? So we end up doing those different setups, making sure that we actually engage them. And then, of course, we still talk to staff and other people just to find out what's the best way of, um, doing things such as out there. And I believe it was, uh, Dealey, that's one of the areas that we actually had some, some of those, uh, boards back, you know, for a period of time. So those are things that we actually do in order to ensure the public that they know it's coming.
We're also in the process, actually TJ from our Communication Department designed signs for all of our SLOSS locations, including the buildings, the intersections, uh, I think we had some that we moved. So we designed those in-house. We usually make those in-house, but before the fire, uh, sign machine was down, so we have sent out POs to have those signs made, so I'm not sure where we're at in the process. Gary or Scott, that might give an answer to that, but the signs should be very close to being completed.
So we're, we're progressing then, it sounds like, but you, you hear my note, let's just consider the bigger visual. Um, I wasn't, um, challenging or marvelizing the efforts today, that I just wanted, some things are just simple, right? That perhaps we can take advantage of, and I know it's a lot, but I think in this case, we better, um, err on the side of over communicating on how these dollars are being spent and, and assuming that, oh, God, me, you just don't wanna take the public for granted on. And I hear people say that they don't know, they didn't hear, but let's try to do as best as we can, and let's really assess what we're doing to see like, okay, is this the best we can do? I'm sure Commissioner Mitchell, you got this, and you'll, or you'll keep us on task. But that was, David, you did great in answering what I wanted, you knew I was coming, I was gonna say this, and this was a setup, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, anyone else before us? Commissioner Mitchell, I know as part of the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation, are you envisioning having signage placed in those key locations? Like for example, this senior center happening, that exact spot is going, or something to explain?
Yes, yes.
All right, you've answered my question.
And I'll try me if you want, if I could just, and, and, and that's the plan, and we just gotta move on it. And I think, Mark, the bigger question is, how, how long do we wait that the machine is down that you spoke about?
Oh, we're, we're getting out five days.
Okay, excuse me, right, and that's one of my next things, is that let's not wait another month or two because the machine is down and we're still waiting. But this conversation has been had a, a couple of times too many, so we need to kind of either move in another direction till we get the time.
We've already done it.
Oh, really? And yes, Madam Chair, the, the plan is to kind of place these from yard signs to big signs, the four by fours to two by fours. And, and, you know, however it works out to make sure we notify them outside of DC twenty-three, outside of emails. Because like we know, everybody's not on email, and everybody is not savvy enough to kind of pick up the, um, the internet. So we, we're kind of going outside the box and making sure that this information is out, and so these guys can kind of know what we're doing and where their monies, where their pennies are being spent, so. And I think David and his team have done a great job, and we're going to include, Mark, I mean, uh, Rick, not Mark, Rick, they're doing a great job at moving this stuff along, so. Outside of that, that's all I got. I yield.
Okay, very good. All right, but thank you so much, Mr. Good, for your presentation, and we'll move on to the next item. Thank you so much. Next we have a presentation from Ms. Emily Lightner from the Culture Arts Center. It's an update. Uh, we have so many organizations that are board commissioners that operate on our behalf and support our vision. And I've been asked in each, um, of these divisions to come in and just report, to give us a report and update with what's going on. I would like to say before you say, we had a big day on Taste of Douglasville. That was huge out there, so I know you probably will enlighten the Board of Commissioners as well. So with no further ado, we have Ms. Emily Lightner. She is our Director of the Culture Arts Center here in Douglasville and Douglas County.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chairman, County Commissioners, and, and everyone here today. As Madam Chair mentioned, my name is Emily Lightner. I am the Executive Director for the Culture Arts Council here in Douglasville and Douglas County. And twenty eighteen was an outstanding year for us, and it was also very busy. And twenty nineteen is only halfway through the year for us physically, and, uh, is already better than ever. And so I wanted to give you a brief update of where the CAC is and where we're heading, um, in that direction. Uh, with Taste of Douglasville, which just happened Saturday, uh, we had the largest crown we've ever had. We have the largest vendors we've ever had, and we're looking to grow even more for next year. Thank you, Madam Chair, for passing out the awards. It meant a lot to us. But I know we have, uh, Ms. Susan here today as well, mental health for H, for, uh, presenting those awards as well, and all everybody who's able to attend. Uh, we had a wonderful turnout, and again, all these, uh, the money that we raised through our fundraiser, and the Taste of Douglasville goes to support programs that we do throughout the community, which I'll be touching on, um, and just shortly. We started a quarterly report card that should come to your Commissioner's email, um, address, to give you a brief update on what we've done in that quarter. Uh, it should show you financials, it should show you how many financials, um, come through, and then also how many people we've been able to reach in that quarter as well through visitors, events, programs, our school programs as well. So it gives you a brief snapshot of that quarter, but it also gives you, uh, things that we have upcoming, just so, uh, you can stay informed with everything that we have going on. We continue to offer a wide range of high-quality art classes to the citizens of Douglas County, along with our public art, uh, our pop-up art shop, which we created in twenty seventeen as an incubator for our local artists, to help them get them growing, get them out to the community, um, and grow their business as well. We are there to help and support them. Along with our nine, uh, rotating exhibits that we have, ranging from our Youth Art Month in partnership with the Douglas County School System, but also, uh, like for January and February, we had our Inspiration, which was our Black History Month exhibit. This, the exhibit alone, from our opening reception, we were able to have three hundred people come through just in the opening reception. Then those people also stayed and ate in our downtown restaurants and our county restaurants. And we had people from our surveys and talking to people through reception, came from Alabama, from Tennessee, from all across the state of Georgia. Those people came and stayed in our hotels, all driving economic development in our community just from one exhibit. And we have nine of these exhibits, so that's just one part of something that we're doing to help promote everything that we're doing in the county and for the community. We also just offered a week-long spring break arts camp. It's an intensive arts camp. We have four professional teaching artists. Uh, we pull these artists from the Georgia Council of Arts Registry, um, so they are professionals in their field. We were able to offer four scholarships this year for the camp to the community that we were able to present in the school system. And, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and County Commissioners, for your support and assistance with us being able to offer these scholarships. It makes a huge impact, and with this scholarship, we hope to bridge the gap between the opportunity and the arts. Unfortunately, not everybody's able to attend us at the Spring Break Arts Camp, but with these scholarships, we're able to make an impact on these kids' lives. Uh, we also offer the Douglas County School System a wide variety of innovative arts education programming, including our after-school residencies, our performances, our public art projects, and our family arts, again, at no cost to our school system. Thanks to our fundraisers like the Taste of Douglasville, we're able to do all these. We enjoy working with TJ and his crew, participating in the DCTV twenty-three to help get the word out there to the community, along with, uh, all of the other wonderful, um, aspects that we're able to, to provide to the community. Just a year ago, we instituted our new Culture Arts Council logo. Before, we had a Magnoia. It sold just well for the past thirty years. But we are stepping into a new generation. We're moving forward. So our new logo represents the Douglas County Community Strategic Plan. We have heard nothing but regular views about our new logo, and it's also showing partnership that we have, not just with our county government and our city government, but also everybody else in between with Doc, uh, WSA, with, uh, the school system. So we have implemented that logo now, and you'll see it across all of our documents. Uh, we have shirts now as well to help get it out there to the community. The CAC also likes to participate and help get the word out to the community about everything the county has to offer, like our Hydrangea Festival, uh, that we participate in. And, uh, we, uh, have a wonderful time. We have a lot of things planned, June first and second, so please stop by, um, if you're in town. We also work with Congressman Scott on his annual scholarship art contest that is in the lobby outside. We, uh, have a wonderful time. He's great to work with. Uh, this year, uh, me and some of my staff were able to judge the competition, and it was a very hard competition. They had some very talented work, and we were, uh, blessed to see one of our own Douglas County residents, um, be able to win that award as well. And we also help with the scholarship funds that he presents, um, to those students as well. And, uh, September Saturdays and many other events that the county has, we love to participate, help get the word out that everything we and the county have to offer. I recently presented in March, uh, the State of the Arts Address for Douglasville and Douglas County at the Arts Culture and Community this month. And thank you Tiffany for helping pull all of that together. It was a fabulous event. If you were not able to attend, uh, we had a well, uh, a wide variety of, uh, arts being represented, and one thing that always amazes me, the libraries. The libraries have so much going on and finding ways to help get it out there more. And so we're trying to partner with our libraries, the other communities that are, are presenting arts, and get that out there because that's our job as the Culture Arts Council. It's not just focus on what we're doing, but what our community is doing and getting it out there to the public. We also finalized our strategic plan this time last year, and one of the events that came out of it was our Cheers to the Arts event. Uh, we realized that we are not reaching as many millennials right now, so we wanna target more millennials to get them in and involve in Arts Council and in our community. And so we created this Cheers to the Arts through a survey that we did, and we did four series back-to-back. One of them was called Wine in the Woods at the Dog River Library, and it was a huge success. Our evaluations and surveys asked for the, us to repeat it, so now we're gonna be doing it again, but only quarterly now. And through that survey also, we realized that a good portion of those people who came to the Dog River Library hadn't either never been there or they have never heard of it. And so it was a great opportunity to promote the Dog River Library and all the wonderful aspects that it has within our own community, all while supporting the arts at the same time. Another thing that came out of our strategic plan was our public art initiative. Many of you have already seen some of the work that's coming around in the community. Um, and unfortunately, we don't have anything really big yet in our community. So this is something that the Culture Arts Council is striving to bring more to Douglasville and Douglas County, to make us known for the public art. You'll see it when you go to, uh, all the way from California to New York, if you go to the beach, you see the light fixtures painted. Uh, so we've, uh, implemented a few projects, and we have a whole lot more underway. Just a few is our fire hydrant. Uh, it's called Fire Up the Arts in partnership with the Douglas County Fire Department, the Douglas County School System, and of course, WSA. So you'll see those along the streets. Right now, our first stint is from the Culture Arts Center to O'Neill Plaza. We have a lot more coming underway, so stay tuned for those. But also we have, um, our first bench was our first public art initiative that we, uh, presented to the community at our, um, unveiling of our new logo, which now resides outside of the Culture Arts Center. It was inspired by our butterfly garden, uh, which is maintained by the Master Gardeners and the Anaphanastic Garden Club. Uh, they do a fabulous job, and so that bench says Love One Another with hydrangeas, um, and, and butterflies on it. And I'm talking with other people, because I would love to see these in all of our butterfly gardens, so let's try to make it happen. I wrote a grant, I was able to get some money, so now we are working on getting benches throughout all of our butterfly gardens for everything they're doing. We have two, um, we had RFPs put out. Two are already underway, and one is at Dealey Park, and the other will be at Douglas County Library. Our goal is to get them in before Hydrangea Festival. Uh, and then, not, another one of our projects is our Backrooms called Be the Change. I partner with the Douglas County School System, and our first trial, uh, is at the North Douglas Elementary School, and it's Words of Affirmation. And a timer bullying is such an issue, where does it happen the most? It happens in the backroom. There's no teachers, there's no cameras. And so if they see Be Kind or You Are Beautiful, maybe we can make that small impact from these murals that we'll be doing. So stay tuned, that will be, um, be happening during the summer. The sketches have already been approved, so we're moving forward with that now. Uh, but also our Art Online program is a part of our public art initiative. We currently, uh, been expanding that. Uh, we are thriving at WSA, the Douglas County Economic Development Authority. We have recently expanded to the Capitol thanks to Mike, Senator Mike Dugan. We've changed out some artworks with, uh, some of our Commissioner's office, but we also expanded to the new Annex Building and added things into the lobbies and, uh, throughout their offices, again, making art available to everyone. And so we are fortunate to be able to do that. We have officially gone, uh, rotated through all of our permanent collection now. And we are now, uh, working with our local artists to get it out there. And WSA is a great example. We've sold six pieces. We don't keep any of the profits. We give it straight to the artist. So now we are not only getting the artist's name out to the community, we're also, uh, supporting and driving the economy for him, himself, and our local artists and our local community. Uh, so those are just a few things. We also had our Matt Hatter Tea Party in, uh, March. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Carthan for judging our bonnet contest. We had, uh, completely sold-out events, and, you know, we always publicize it's for younger kids. And we have a great time with, uh, an egg hunt, we have a hat contest. Um, but I've noticed there's a lot more adults getting into it now as well, which is fun to see people come out in their costumes. We have the characters from Wonderland attend. Uh, so it's a great event for the community, um, to, to come out. And again, uh, that's just something that we do. It's not a fundraiser for us, but another activity for the kids and the, and the adults to participate in as well. Uh, lastly, we have our annual meeting. Our fiscal year ends the end of June. Our annual meeting is June eleventh. Chairman and County Commissioners will be receiving your invitation today. I've dropped them off. Uh, I encourage you to go and attend. As we wrap up this little year, you'll get the numbers on how we did for the year. We'll talk about our visitors, our financial situation, um, and this is our fifth year in the black, so we are growing exponentially. And we are reaching more people than we ever have before. Uh, so you'll be able to see, um, how we're doing, what we have coming up planned for the next year. And we will also, uh, have some demos, some activities, because what's a meeting without getting your hands in some paint? So we will have great food, uh, catered by Taco Mac as well. Uh, I'm currently working with ARC, the Atlanta, Atlanta Regional Commission, and ALMA, which is the Art Leaders of Metro Atlanta, to expand on the public art initiative. I'm sitting on their board now to promote all of the artwork in Metro Atlanta, but especially Douglas County. So we have a lot of things underway, a lot of new things coming, and I wanna personally thank you for your continuous support and citizens of Douglas County, uh, for all of our current programs and our new initiatives as well. Your support means the world to us, and we couldn't do it without you. As you already know, the arts can bring people together across all boundaries. It can drive our economy. It can unify a community. Our artists aren't only in music museums or concert halls, they're all around us. It's just a matter of how you interpret it. Every one of us has the ability to create and to imagine a way to make our community healthier and stronger. By working together, we can bring those impossible dreams to life. Thank you Chairman and County Commissioners for your time and letting me speak with you today. Do you all have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions, the Councilmen, Board of Commissioners? Just like to personally thank you for providing this wealth of, of knowledge for all of us and this information that you've brought for that's certainly enlightened the Board of Commissioners and also our citizens of Douglas County. We have a lot of things going on, positive things.
Yes.
Thank you for raising our positive profile here in Douglas County. And I'm telling you, we just go, we don't have anywhere else to go but, uh.
That's right.
So thank you for all the things that you're doing, and I know you'll be having some surprises a little later for the Board of Commissioners. But we'll tell them a little later, so.
All right.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. The Board of Commissioners will move on to tab number five, and I'm just going to mention it briefly. I'm not sure if... A resolution in support of the Census 2020 and to form a local complete county committee. Ron Robinson, if you could just give us a, just a brief description of what this resolution will be about tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am. Chair, thank you. Good morning, and I will be very brief. The resolution is in support of the Census 2020, and it recognizes that we had our Census 2020 kickoff event last week, and that we are forming a complete county committee to tackle and count all the citizens in Douglas County. Let's count.
All right. Let's count. Any questions for the Board? Just like to commend you last week for such a stellar kickoff. It was great, and we look forward to counting everyone. You just said, "Let's count." So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Next, we have tab number six. Authorization to approve the revised intergovernmental agreement with the City of Douglasville to install a northbound right lane on Howie Field, the Douglas Boulevard, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents subject to final review. County Administrator, do you have any comment on this?
Yes, ma'am. The agreement's essentially the same agreement we approved last time. It's up to, it's either half or up to $60,000 if the city will contribute to this project, but after the board approved it last time, the copy, we were thinking back when the city had a deadline in it. Ours did not. So we talked with the city, the deadline they had included in their agreement was not attainable, so we negotiated a new deadline as far as the project goes. So what's included in the agreement, I'm not saying it will take this long to do the project, but there is a lot of work. You've got all the, you've got lightway, you've got utilities that have to be relocated. Those will take a while. But so the date that's included in here is July 1st, 2022.
Okay. Any questions for the Board? Or comment?
Just held a good day, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you. That, it's just a buffer, like County Administrator, the date. Okay. All right, thank you. We'll move on to tab number seven, which is our first business item, and is authorization to approve a $50,000 additional services for the Douglas County Community Service Board and amend the budget. Mr. Lifer, Ray Lifer, there you are. Board of Commissioners, Mr. Lifer presented it. He presented to us at our last meeting. Didn't know if you all had additional questions or concerns or comments. Commissioner Guyer?
I would just say that I went over there and...
George.
...there's B.C., and I was very impressed, and I've met some of the staff and the, what they do for different parts of the... It's not just mental health. It's not just drug addiction. It's just not, just one thing. It covers a wide range of services. My only problem at the beginning was we were surprised with it. It's just like a judge being surprised, I mean, making a decision on something he doesn't, hasn't heard the facts on, and that's what we needed. And perhaps we can avoid things like this in the future where we will, each Commissioner will have a sit-down time with people that are bringing forth a $450,000 amendment to the budget because we just, we have to find it. And maybe we can do better in our budget process where if we anticipate something of this magnitude, it can be included in the budget somewhere, you know, as a contingency or something. But I was very impressed with your operation over there and the people that you have on staff and your services.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer. Commissioner Vice Joe Robinson?
Yeah, I've been great, great, thank you. Again, no, no, you did a great job in our last presentation. Your last presentation, if I hadn't said it, was very, very thorough. You know, for the citizens, you just, this is something that's being driven by the Community Service Board, which is like our Development Authority, like anything else that is one step removed from us, it has its own Board of Directors, in which I believe Madam Chair is a member of it. I've been aware of this project going on. I've been aware of its status, its need in the community, but also the need to fund it. In other words, we've grown since we originally established the original allocation for this, right? Our density has, I mean, the density of this population has really grown. And so watching this, we did do a study during last year's budget process. I did have this on my tab as an appropriation during the budget process. $450,000 was acknowledged, right? It was a priority, but it was like, okay, let's pause on this, let's massage this, let's see how the year plays out. It's not, nothing new. Now, as I've always said, commissioners tend to focus on what they think is the priority, and that's okay. I don't look at everything. I just look at the things that I advocate for, and I tend to keep up with them. But I want to make sure the public recognizes that this is very, very needed. This administration is committed to healthcare and making sure that it's advanced, making sure that there's proper funding, and so that means there's going to be a shift, again, in policy toward like, okay, we're going to spend enough money over there on that thing, what about this? And so I do acknowledge that this bogey roughly about, what, $1.5 million is big. Let's acknowledge, for the record, $50,000 that the Board of Commissioners has approved in times past for mental health. Our department agency that we had allocated it to for the past two years didn't step up this year, so $50,000 was put over in that budget, obviously by default. Ray, my question is, are you still going to handle the mental health that we committed to?
Absolutely. Just to caveat on that point, last week, we had talked with DBHBD, and we received additional funding, and I believe the total, if I'm not mistaken, is around $531,000 to extend intensive case management and supportive mental health services for, excuse me, supportive employment services. And then last Thursday, Judge McLean met, and we had finalized the plan to provide the treatment as well as a shelter for the Sanctuary Village Program. So River Canyon will become a glass soon.
So there's, so what we're doing is basically stopping the bleeding, right? We're saying we're committing to this for five years, and my question to you last time, which is, okay, at what point will it become a little bit more self-sufficient? Do we think we can get there through these additional services that you just mentioned? Because I think that's important. While I'm solely committed, I'm also challenging to be efficient with your services, and what is it going to take? More people, more money, or what? So just make it brief, and we can get out of this.
Okay. Well, two parts. First part was, it will take more contracted services, which we're negotiating with the Department of Behavioral and Development Disabilities now, which I just alluded to. The second part will, it will take the bodies, it will take that competent staff, which I have here representing us this afternoon, that will start to make that mission happen. And then lastly, we'll take that community buy-in, which I think is evident from what we saw this morning. So what we're looking at overall is probably a two- to three-year process before we're self-sufficient due to us having to build that fee-for-service type of model. But yes, I see us in the near future being self-sustaining.
And then my final question, so what I'm hearing is that this is, is this still Cobb Douglas Community Service Board, or do we have sort of the autonomy, or at least semi-autonomy, to be in control of our own destiny versus being dealt our own hand? Can you speak to that?
This is Douglas County's Community Services Board only, with some oversight and governance from the state of Georgia.
Okay. You know, comments? Commissioner Carthan?
Mr. Lifer, thank you again for your presentation. It was wonderful. I did have some constituents that emailed me in regards to wanting to know if the money that you did or did not receive was ill-spent. Can you just talk about that to let them know again that, you know, the break is what caused the short fall?
Oh, absolutely. So right now, our total budget for the fiscal year is probably around about $3.2 million. Of that, about $1.6 million comes directly from HUD in support of our residential programs, the 88 apartments I listed to when I was breaking, and our eight homes. And that goes back to pay for rents and utilities for those individuals there, and that's just reimbursement. Basically, we pay it out, they pay us back. Does not include the treatment staff, which is probably around another $300,000 or $500,000 in expenses to us. As it pertains to the mental health core, right now, our maximum reimbursement is $183,000. Right now, my core mental health staff for the outpatient is about $1.2 million in cost. So to answer the question, there is no additional revenues to be fraudulently spent or wasteful. What we've done is we tapped into our reserves and been able to continue those services without interruption to the community.
Question, Robinson?
Yeah, just, yeah, yeah, real quick. We talked about just providing for it, and I appreciate the comment about the budget and stuff. So please recognize, let's talk about the source of funding. Where does it come from? The Board of Commissioners initiated a tan earlier this year. It was 18 million dollar tan, $16 million was for cash flow needs. There was an additional $2 million that was set aside that allowed us to do things that were unanticipated, unplanned. Now, it's the whole point. Well, we didn't anticipate or plan that we'd be in a hole with this, and part of our public comments, in which I think County Clerk can confirm, we stated that the overage, the $2 million, could be used for perhaps four things: community service board, technology website update, DOT contributions for matches if necessary, and pension obligations if in fact it came down. And I'm sure I just want to state that for the record, that that is the source, because sometimes people, I didn't hear it said, but if we need to have something to come out of our finance committee as a formal recommendation, we can do that because we've got a meeting at 2:00. That is on the play of the board. Anybody?
You, okay? Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes. And thanks, Vice Joe Robinson, for making that statement, because I'd love to hear that come from the Finance Committee, so I would assume when you guys meet your meeting, that'll be the first step in the right direction. My other question to you though, so we mentioned that you talked to, and we've had a couple of conversations, that's one I had to share with the general public, you've had a conversation with Core, you've had a conversation with Judge Bob McLean, and if you want to re-understand that this year is going to be a help in so many works to all the various pots of money that's being spent, that's going toward mental health, that we want to make sure that we all capitalize and kind of understand that each individual has their pot of monies in which they're dealing with. How do we kind of bring it all together to make it one? I guess.
Well, I guess to answer that question, number one, we would start off with just having to build the trust and sitting down and really looking at what are the common objectives for all the programs, which is a more sound mental health system in Douglas County. Also, we'd have to start looking at how do we share information, because that's one of the things that's solid. Individual comes in there in my electronic medical record system, and judges of medical record system, and left and right hand are talking and communicating. So the second thing is that we would have to come together in principle of how we're going to conduct business to make sure that there were no breaks or gaps in coverage based on historical numbers. And then lastly, what we'd have to do is that we would have to have buy-in and input from each partner to ensure that the revenues are being used the right way to seek all of the interest of everyone that's at the table.
Correct, correct. And speaking of numbers, because numbers is what the state is looking for. So I'm assuming that each one of these numbers games that we're having to play with the state will be a part of the state numbers for this operation to kind of look forward to possible state and any other funding or grants and all that kind of good stuff.
Oh, absolutely. First part of that would be that you all would get, and the community would get a true number of Core reserving with mental health issues, development disability issues in the community, because it's consolidated effort now. So it won't say that we've had 1,000 that are incarcerated, 1,700 are being serviced in the CSB, and then we have another 400 on the docket for court cases. We'll be able to bring all that stuff together.
So you're going to use all those numbers?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And that's what I'm alluding to. I want to make sure that...
Oh, absolutely.
That the big picture is the numbers that you'll use, not Judge McLean's number and Core numbers that they submit probably separately. I don't know how that helped our work with everybody, but I'm, I have to just assume that you are having those kind of conversations so everybody can feel like they're part of the growth and the direction when it comes to mental health.
Absolutely. And like I said, so our citizens approaching, what that would do is we send them to the Department of Behavioral, which they would offset our funding based on the services that were going up. The Census would ultimately increase based on all of us talking together and communicating.
And last but not least, share with the general public that this marriage that we all thought we had, that, I'm assuming it was common law or none of the above, you know, had no paper, but it shocked me, even when you came and explained to us where we are. But I'm glad that at least we're taking a hard look at how this and how we move forward.
Absolutely. So in July of 1994, the two boards, both Cobb's, CSB, and Douglas CSB decided that they would share a chief executive officer that would be appointed to serve over both. That was kind of taken because at the same time, we knew the merger of public health had taken place. So it was just a, I guess, a known unknown that we were one entity. During investigation, however, and some auditing, we found out that we were never together. Two separate contracts with the state, the whole nine, different accountability practices, everything. But the issue was, is that the state had viewed us as one, and so they were shifting funding to be more predominantly placed into the Cobb contract and us to be considered a pastor. And so what happens over time is now we realize the need for mental health and development disabilities treatment here in this county has grown, but we have no meat in our contract. And so what that is, there's certain things that are inherent in contracts. You have maximum reimbursement limits that are set based on your service population. You have guaranteed revenues that are set aside for your benefits plan of your staff. All of those things were removed out of the Douglas contract, and so what we had was a shell of a CSB contract compared to other community services boards servicing counties of our similar size.
Right. So what brought this on? What brought up the divorce?
Well, we got an active board who came in and realized that the total CSB footprint for Douglas County at the time that they walked in was about 40 employees in dilapidated buildings, with black mold up the wall. There was no kind of connection with any of the other services that were taking place within the community. So absenteeism is basically what made this change. We got a board in that said that we deserve better, we need better, and they started making the moves to appoint the right people in the right positions and started making a check.
And then I made Cobb come back around and say, well, wait a minute. If you guys want all these types of services in dollars and cents, because it's probably about dollars and cents, they decided to say, well, no, we're not really married. We're just, we're just dating, I guess.
Well, I wouldn't place, right, but I wouldn't place it on the entire Cobb board, but we did have a chief executive officer that felt that way, who asked to have his contract amended to be, for all references to Douglas, be pulled out of it.
Got it. And last but not least, we have a Marcus, maybe a question, you know, I think $173,000 of that annually that we deal with, would that be Michelle, or somebody can kind of share with the general public?
Yeah, it's $173,000 that's currently in the budget.
Right, that we normally deal with. This is in addition to the, to kind of get everything back in line to kind of move this particular program forward, correct?
Correct. Right now, that $173,000 is used to offset costs of psychiatrists. Right now, with the 40% benefits markup, it costs me roughly for 36 hour a week psychiatrists around $183,000. And so maximum reimbursement being $183,000 as well, that's two psychiatrists, but it doesn't cover any of the clinical staff that come along with that, the nursing staff that comes along with that, or the actual group leaders.
Right.
And so that's kind of how that budget is lined out right now, that $173,000.
So this is what we're talking about, 450 will just only hit you through the year, or it's, that's going to be an annual thing, that's going to be needed, but at the same token, it'll get you back in line to where you can ask for state dollars because you now have concrete numbers that you can kind of send back to the state stating what we're doing, what we're doing as a county and really taking a hard look at mental health.
Correct. So what happened with the state is, we told them, we wanted to be able to stand on our own two feet. They said, prove it. Let's see the community buy-in and what you're going to be able to do first, and then we'll start appropriating our funds accordingly to what we think you can and will be able to do. One of the things we had to do, we had to hire a complete administrative staff because we had been dependent on Cobb's administration. You know, clinical director positions, accounting positions, all of these things, while also trying to expand and grow the actual service array. And so what we've done this year is we've taken the revenues that we've saved in different ways and started pushing it towards staff growth. Now, what we're doing in return is we're going back to the state saying, this is what we built, now how are you going to support us now? I need an increased maximum reimbursement for outpatient services. I need additional services that we once relied on Cobb, but we can now generate and run here in our local community. run here in our local community. And so it's, so it's basically a twofold. So we are asking for that four fifty for sustainability, but also for growth.
Okay. And last but not least, can you provide an organizational chart of how this will be all made up, so we can account for everybody and where they are, what it looks like, so that vision for me will look better on paper, if I can kind of get an idea of what that truly will look like, so?
Absolutely. I can support that. I will tell you, just in the last two months, we've grown our outpatient staff from eight to twenty-one. And so this is twenty-one direct care providers. We're talking clinicians, we're talking therapists, we're talking group leaders, we're talking the whole gamut, substance abuse counselors, direct service support staff for our development disabilities. So it's all, I can support you with that document to show you what it looks like.
Got it. How long would it take you to kind of pull some out, because I'm assuming?
It's being built now, so I can give it to you by the end of the day. I can actually send it for us.
And I think that this team would like to probably see that as well. So outside of that, I mean, I just, I think it's commendable of what you're trying to help, what we're trying to help you pull off, because it only makes sense. I mean, we can't, I know the state has kind of did their cuts and don't want to spend that much more money on mental health, but I don't think we as a county can, we can't do that. I mean, it only makes sense, because I can see now that Cher and his operation trying to house these individuals, that's not the place for them. They've got a sickness that we need to kind of address, and, you know, at our Taj Mahal jail, it's not the place to try to address it, so?
Absolutely.
Okay. I go back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Okay, well, thank you so much, Mr. Michael. We'll change your presentation. Okay. Mr. Wilson, you have, Mr. Wilson is the Vice Chairman of the CS Board. State your name for the record.
Thank you. Ron Wilson, Vice Chair, CSB. As you heard, one of the things we're trying to do is establish a relationship and a partnership with many of the organizations within the community. And one of those important partners is the court system. So Judge McLean, if you'd like to say a word to?
No, I'm here just to support what Ray is asking for.
Okay. Good. And we thank you for being here. That's important, because the court system will be a major part of our effort this year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Wilson, we appreciate you coming in as well. And thank you so much, George. Thank you for supporting this effort, CSB. Thank you, Mr. Ray, Mr. Michael. All right, we'll move on to tab number eight. Tab number eight is authorization to approve a sewer easement and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Worthington?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and Miss Moore. As I said, this is an easement for a sewer line across a vacant piece of property that Douglas County owns at the corner of Douglas Hill Road and Thornton Road. And that's the future home of fire station number nine. The sewer easements required by developer neighboring development. Currently, the sewer is across the street and down the road a little ways, and they need to cross over about two hundred feet of the county property. It's in the front of the property. By allowing this, if y'all so choose to do so, it will give the county access to sewer when we develop the fire station, immediate access. The sewer line will be-
So it'll save you money.
It will save us a lot of money. Y'all may remember the trials and tribulations of tying the animal shelter on the sewer that was across and down the road a little way, so this will eliminate all of that. So the developer that's putting it in has agreed to put clean outs at both the manholes and taps, so it'll be easy access for us to tie into either one. I don't see that there's any negative impact on development, there's substantially deep enough not to impact anybody.
Okay. I will call this preconditioned, getting prepared in advance. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? All right, thank you so much for your presentation. Tab number nine, authorization to approve the purchase of a replacement audio equipment in juvenile court two for the sum of nineteen thousand nine hundred and five dollars and ninety-five cents to be funded through department account one ninety. Is Mark Price here?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Would you please, if you want to go to the podium and if you were to- Can you tell me a little bit about this replacement of the audio equipment in juvenile court?
Yes, ma'am. Courthouse is built in nineteen ninety-seven. We had state-of-the-art audio equipment installed in all courtrooms, and two thousand nineteen, it's no longer state-of-the-art. The digital age has taken over. I've spent several thousand dollars over the course of the last several years repairing courtroom audio systems as they break down, and every time the technician comes out, they tell me that we need to, we need to upgrade. They're getting harder to find the parts for the system, and the technicians are younger technicians, and they're not trained to work on the old systems. Judge Walker's juvenile courtroom two is currently not working, and she's working with a borrowed PA system from TJ, our communications department. So what I like to do is, I've had a contractor look at it, and they said that they can do it for a not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, under twenty thousand dollars. And this will give us a prototype. I think we could see, there's a lot of unknowns when they're replaced. If the equipment is set, we know what we're going to get, but there's a lot of unknowns in the labor. And if we could get this done, then we'll know what it's going to take to do the other courtrooms and maybe budget them going forward for future years. But right now, we do need to get that courtroom back online.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Vice Chair Robinson?
Yeah, and again, this is a broader context of, you know, we're redoing this courthouse right now, with a lot of renovations, and this is one of the things where when it comes to long-term capital planning, you know, we have to anticipate these things, right? I would have liked to have known that this was the need when we're sitting here setting aside the money for it, moving the task commissioner out to another building, and what it took for this, but duly noted, it needs to be done, but let's be thoughtful. So this twenty thousand is just for the juvenile-
Juvenile courtroom two.
Yep, courtroom two. When I think about Citizens Hall, and it's inadequate in my mind, audio system, when I think about everything else, can we get our minds around what it takes to upgrade? Because this thing is old. It's aged. And so duly noted on the need to do right now, right? Can we at least extend forward and say, okay, guys, when y'all come, you know, when y'all come to us, come stage. I know sometimes we're like, well, let's just do this one, when you already know that there's a broader need, and we just stage it. It's like, well, I only can spend so much right now, but I would just like to know the context of what we're getting into. But that's my question to the county administrator. Is there any other courtroom that needs to be upgraded? Is there anything else, you know, Citizens Hall that needs to be upgraded versus the Peaceville? That would be helpful. But Madam Chair, I'm not suggesting that we stop the need today. Judge Walker needs to have that courtroom in order, and I have no problem. I'm just saying, I'd at least like to know the full dollar amount of town to upgrade. Yeah, go ahead.
So we rely, we rely on other departments to tell us and Mark what their needs are.
Yep.
So Judge Emerson had sent an email out earlier, so they are looking at what it would take to replace the sound systems in the other courtrooms as well.
Got you.
But this was not submitted to us as a BIR, to my knowledge, I'm going by memory, in the twenty, for this budget, so it wasn't submitted last year.
Sure.
But they didn't realize it was going to go out, so.
To that point, and the source of funding for this is what?
One ninety contingency. The balance in there is four hundred and twenty thousand.
Contingency. And this was on the five-year capital freedom plan-
Yep.
-that we did last year. This was number one of ours for twenty twenty.
Okay. All right, well, that worked out contingency, is this one? I'm with, I agree.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Price. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to tab number ten, authorization to approve the contract for Everett Ford as senior chaplain as a newly created physician at the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Worthington?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Pretty self-explanatory on that one. I understand it's been in the works for a little while now, to add Edwin to the chaplain for the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office today.
Okay.
I think the board previously approved it?
It was not a non-contract agreement.
Oh, okay. So we always, I do remember. Commissioner Guy, I want to give that question.
Yes, Bobby, was this to replace Gary McManus?
No, my understanding is Edwin is the chaplain for the overall sheriff's office. The area was focused on the jail and the ministries inside the jail. Edwin will be over the department, if you understand me, with what we've passed, I believe, was some volunteer chaplain services, but Edwin will be the department official chaplain.
Okay, but CJ still does the other ministry there?
The ministry, that stuff's still going on in the jail, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that never stopped since McManus has been gone. I'm not sure exactly who is the one in charge of that. That kind of works.
See.
Yeah.
All right, I go back.
Good, thank you. Another question, Commissioner Carpen?
Just curious, is this coming out of the sheriff's budget or our issue? I want to ask if the sheriff's is the sheriff's budget. Yeah, all right, that was it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item, tab number eleven, authorization to extend the ground lease agreement for Sheltering Arms, additional five-year period, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is a Sheltering Arms agreement that was done back in nineteen ninety-nine, and it was a long-term license expiring at the end of June thirtieth of this year. And the deal that was started in nineteen ninety-nine, they had a number of option periods to extend for five years, and so they're going to extension exercising one of those options for an additional period of five years, but they'll have others under the original agreement theoretically. This is for the property of thirty-eight thirty-three Longview Drive. The tenant pays ten dollars a month, but pays all utilities. And again, it's, the ground lease was signed with Sheltering Arms, a nonprofit, in nineteen ninety-nine. Very long agreement, it's for its length of time, and I'm not, we're just bringing it to you. They do have the right exercise option. I think at some point, somebody might want to renegotiate how long that's going to be and what that's going to be like. You know, we were not involved in the original nineteen ninety-nine deal.
Okay. And how long will we announce, how much will we-
Well, this initial extension, I think it's for five years, so another five years. If you read the agreement, the agreement kind of to place ten option periods of five years, fifty years, which seems excessive to me at the time, but that's what's in the original agreement.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Vice Chair Robinson?
Yeah, interesting, we have these latent precedents that are set, right, for a long period of time, and we do what we do. And so, all right, duly noted, Sheltering Arms, so that's the one right behind Bearman Road, one street over.
Where's Longview? Does anybody know?
That's the old Bowlin Alley, I believe.
Old Bowlin Alley, all right, all right. I know what you're talking about, skating, all that stuff. Yeah, so nineteen ninety-nine, all right, so my oldest was born in ninety-seven, my youngest born in two thousand, they both went there during that time period when they were infants and grew up. And I think at that time, Councilman Ashan Burgany was the center manager there, and so that predates all of our elected lives. I know the area quite well, and I recognize what we're trying to do here, but it gives context, and I have no objections to supporting it, Madam Chair.
Right. Okay. Any other questions regarding this one? All right, thank you. We'll move on to the next tab. Tab number twelve, authorization to award the painting of the Woody Fight Center to USA Painting for the total cost of seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and amend the budget. Director Peacock?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is being brought to you today because it was a non-budgeted item in the twenty nineteen budget. It's something that's needed, the painting is needed, and we're just asking the commission to allow us to amend the budget and have the painting done.
Okay. The county administrator, you want to explain a little more on this?
Yeah, the chairman had brought this up, and the plan was, even though we'd come out of fund balance, the plan was to use the sixty thousand dollars that was in our budget as well, that we received from the easement on Earl D. Lee Boulevard.
And so the board people, the Woody Fight Center has not been painted in fifteen years, so they, and also the carpet hasn't been changed as well, in fifteen years, so if you go over there and just round with me as well, I've looked, and I go over monthly for my birthday parties, and it's not implorable, but it's right up on the floor. So we had the extra funding that was the easement for, was it easement for, right, where's it easement?
For Burger King, it's next door to the park where the sign is on Earl D. Lee Boulevard, the sign for the sheriff's office.
Yeah, so we wanted to use some of that funding for that, instead of putting it in the general fund and putting it up, because we're good in the general fund, and also got another, we're looking at the senior center on Fairburn Road. We put some mini blinds in that area, and then also, there's a couple rooms that need painted. Am I, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We're working on this, of course.
Those two senior centers have had, not had anything done, particularly Woody Fight, in fifteen years. So Commissioner-
So I just have a question. Director Peacock, I see that there were three quotes. Substantially, between the first and second, there's a big difference. Can you explain why you went with the second one as opposed to the first one?
The experience of the contractor.
The experience, so how was painting not ever painted?
I honestly was not, I honestly was not involved in this, so I really don't have the question.
I'll talk to Cher about the low quote. So the low quote was a single person said it would take four months to complete.
Okay. Well, yeah, so that-
Yeah.
That was my question. Are you there?
A one-man band.
Yeah.
Okay. Vice Chair Robinson?
Yeah, duly noted. So, you know, again, one more time, and I, sometimes decisions we make should just be defended up. I think about our seniors who painted into the system, they're on the backside of life. I don't have that established yet, but by respect, what they've contributed, we shouldn't have to reason or rationalize the provision of basic, basic quality of life. Change the carpet, paint the walls. I mean, again, it's about priorities. Like, God, we spent a hundred and twenty dollars to make eight hundred people comfortable, but yet we rationalize why we should spend sixty thousand dollars to make all of our seniors have a quality experience coming in. Now, I couldn't tell the carpet was dirty, I'm trusting Madam Chair tells me it's dirty, it's dirty. I get it, the walls are messed up, and so sometimes, I mean, I think we're at a point now in this board, and I'm very pleased to see, we need to do what's right because it's right. And I hear a lot of conversation about the spend, but the spend is the taxpayer dollars, and it should be allocated to where the need is. People shouldn't have to sort of, you know, eggshell, ask for money, or ask for support. The seniors shouldn't have to go through that. They should have advocacy. And so for that, I'm proud to stand behind this request. And I recognize it's unplanned and unbudgeted, but some things, it's just, you just didn't know about, and when you realize and you focus on it, it's like, okay, that's a no-brainer in comparison to some of the other spends. But for this one, the seniors, Madam Chair, they just deserve what they deserve, so I have no problem. I do.
Madam Chair, was, if it was included in the budget, was the request that was scheduled for the March weekend, which didn't pan out like we thought it would, and then Madam Chair came up with the idea to use the $60,000 on the easement?
Yeah, so it wasn't budgeted.
To make it happen.
Yeah, okay, so it didn't make it.
I get, it didn't make it, but, okay, I'm going to come back, it didn't make it, don't make it go down the path of what did make the budget and what gets squeezed out, but we had contingency. So just because the easement popped up as, oh, we can use that like that, why don't you just use, I mean, using, look how we're spending money. We're spending money on court stuff and jail stuff out of contingency for that sound system, but for the seniors, we had to rationalize, okay, we might happen to hit the lot, if something came in an extra. I disagree. My point is, if you want to do it for the seniors, they should be off the top, and everything else falls to the bottom if you can get our internal. That's my only point, it's like, look at how the decisions are being made. You got contingency, you got half a million dollars, so why did we have to wait for the C, oh, we just happen to have that? Stuff like healthcare should be off the top. Seniors should be off the top. The rest of this stuff should, it should be on our tabs and see if it made the budget. It shouldn't be squeezed in, but that's just me. Again, I have no problem. We took the long route to get to the same place we intended to get to, but I support this one hundred percent. Again, Madam Chair, I get it.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to tab number, Director Peacock, thank you so much, you already stated. We'll move to tab number thirteen, authorization to approve the implementation of a community garden agreement by the UGA Cooperative Extension Department of Douglas County.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good morning, and we're doing well. Just as our cultural arts council director said, the arts bring people together, we know gardening also brings people together. And so, currently, we have a garden on Selman Drive, adjacent to the health center and library, and that garden is run by our office under the direction of a master gardener, extension volunteers, and they've been managing and running that garden for many years as a teaching garden and donating the produce here locally to food pantries. So, what we have today for you is a proposal to convert that garden to a community garden, and you see this in all the parts of that proposal, the application and agreement. And today, I have with me Kevin Livingston, our extension agent in charge of agriculture, natural resources, and our master gardener program, and also one of our key master gardeners, Marjorie Stansel, who has been instrumental in helping us create this agreement, and we modeled this agreement after other community gardens that we know are functioning very well from other counties and observing gardens here in our own county also. So, we, what we're proposing is to convert the garden to a community garden and have the citizens rent out the plots for each year, and so the agreement includes the rules and procedures, and also will include some classes on gardening and advice to those gardeners from our master gardener volunteers. And so, we're very excited about this possibility. We've just exploded our questions around gardening from homeowners. School and community gardens have really increased the past few years, so we're happy to have this community garden and continue to educate our citizens.
Madam Chair, the reason this is on the agenda, because it is Douglas County property, it was the garden behind the, it was, used to be used by the master gardener. My understanding of that.
That's correct.
Do not use that garden anymore.
They do not want to be in charge of gardening it just themselves, so converting it to more of a teaching garden where the citizens can have a plot is the plan.
Wonderful. I think that's a great idea. Board of Commissioners, any questions or concerns about this new opportunity, this new initiative? I think it's a great thing. My father was an avid gardener. I would like to probably invest myself, but I know I'm not, I don't have the green thumb. Commissioner?
I have one question. Have you all decided what the rental space cost would be for the community?
Yes, we have a proposed amount for this year that would be, it's one dollar per linear foot, and the width of that garden space would be the forty-two inches. So, for example, that would be ten dollars for a ten-foot-long space, but that's for twenty nineteen. We have a shortened year going into twenty twenty. We propose that that would increase to two dollars per linear foot, but as years go by, we may need to adjust that amount up or down. But in essence, for the rest of twenty nineteen, ten dollars for a ten-foot by forty-two-inch garden plot.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. So, this is a preview of what we have to look at tomorrow, Board of Commissioners. All right, tab number fourteen, authorization to approve a funding agreement with the Land and Regional Commission for the update of the county's comprehensive transportation plan and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Valentine?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is a funding agreement that would allow for the flow of federal funds to perform the update of the transportation plan. Transportation plan typically wants to get updated every five years, it's been close to nine years since the last, the last one was done. And initially, in the capital transportation fund, there was an allocation, this is a project within that fund, there was an allocation for it, I believe the initial amount was sixty-two thousand five hundred, would have been the local match. Since that time, the Land and Regional Commission has enacted additional criteria, additional requirements that they want to get information on, and so they upped the amount of federal funding that they would put on this project to half a million, so a total of six hundred and twenty-five thousand for the overall study. One of the things that we're going to need to do in connection with this, it's probably between twelve months minimum, perhaps fifteen months more likely, we would have a stakeholders' group that would be approaching the board to nominate from the various districts that have been meeting over, looking at the old comprehensive plan and looking at how a county may have changed since oh-nine or twenty-ten. And at the end of the, excuse me, at the end of the fifteen months or so, we would have a plan before the board that would be adopted and forwarded to the Land and Regional Commission and the DCA for.
Any questions from the board, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I want to bring clarity to this ask, Miguel. One of the conversations, I mean, in addition to this capital transportation update, there's been conversation within our transportation committee as well as sub-meetings about there's a transit component. Obviously, we've got a new connect, this is coming online next month. There is the need to capture the data from that, as Commissioner Mitchell would say, the ridership along the way, making sure that's fed into this, and we recognize that that could be a separate body of them, but I'm under the impression that perhaps the current scope is big enough to accommodate that consideration, make sure that's incorporated. We're trying to avoid two contracts, two consultants, two, et cetera. Can you speak to that for a minute, please?
Yes, Commissioner. The, generally, the comprehensive plan has different components within it, one of which would be transit for those communities where there are transit services, and of course, Douglas County does have transit services. Depending on the size of the transit service that is provided, the size of that effort, the extent of it would be, how extensive it would be, and look at the existing services, the existing needs, and then project what was needed for the future. This particular exercise initially will look at the transit component, a bike pedestrian component, it will look at perhaps certain corridors like Highway Five that have special needs, but it does not include a robust transit analysis. To incorporate it into this exercise would take additional effort. It can be done together, the preference based on the agencies and the people that we've talked to is that perhaps it might be two separate efforts. That does not mean that we would ignore, as part of the comprehensive transportation plan, we would ignore the transit component, it is just done at a higher level rather than more detailed than that.
Madam Chair, this is, we've got a transportation meeting tomorrow, committee meeting. This is something that I want to make sure we clarify. Again, Douglas County is, this is not a Gwinnett type of transit plan. We're nowhere near that, we ain't even got out the gate on our buses yet, but at the same point, we can't be negligent and make sure that we at least acknowledge this. They're one in the same. There's no way I would want to go out to the citizens with two stakeholders, sets of meetings about, talk about the same topic. They're related, all right? Spending two sets of consultants, I would not want to keep them separate. I want to make sure that we're clear that we need to, if we need to expand the scope, just to make sure that it has enough to acknowledge all the mobility options that you just talked about without, you know, becoming, again, doubling the price. I think we need to do that, but let us come back with a formal recommendation out of the committee tomorrow, Madam Chair, to finalize what this is, because I don't, I want to, and while I've been in the same meetings with the agencies to understand this, I just don't want to wear the citizens out, well, wait a minute, aren't you doing a transportation update plan? Why are you doing a transit plan? Like, what, what, what are you doing? Just paying consultants, you paying them? I want to be careful, you know, I heard the comment earlier about, okay, we're paying a lot of money to consultants. If I can avoid duplication of effort and try to merge, it just makes sense. So, I want to, can we, will you be okay if I just clarify this for the, for the Board of Commissioners tomorrow out of the committee?
Yes. You can do that.
I yield.
Commissioner Carthay?
Director Miguel, would that component also include what the citizens of District Three kind of talked about as far as Chapel Hill and what that would look like going forward?
Most definitely. It would be corridors like that, but way back, well, perhaps even prior to two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, when the last study was done, we're recognized as needing certain improvements that haven't taken place, at least not fully, and some of them at all. This would be a revisit of, okay, is the need still there, or have things changed? Is the need different, or has it gone away? So, most definitely, we'd take a look at Chapel Hill as a corridor, as well as Highway Five as others, to see where we are and whether the population or development patterns has changed, and that has changed certain needs for the future.
Okay. But you did capture what the district constituents did?
They made it abundantly obvious, yes.
Okay. That Chapel Hill needs to be widened, and that it's been over forty years, and the growth has continued to increase, and with new developments coming along, there's going to be more of an acre, so we definitely want to make sure that we really look at that corridor. I yield.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthay. Director Valentine, it sounds like it's been ten years since this comprehensive plan's been updated. Is it typically of these comprehensive plans, every five years, every ten years, is it normal? Is that pretty routine?
Madam Chair, you really should, should have the update done every five years, as the recommendation. This is overdue.
Okay. Thank you so much. Commissioner?
Thank you, ma'am. Miguel, Highway Five, at one point years ago, would block, I don't know how to say it, zoning, block zone, that as hap, the residential houses sell, that it would become commercial, it would revert to commercial. Are you familiar with any of that, and how far out Highway Five could went?
I'm not familiar with Highway Five in particular, but I'm familiar with the concept of when you have a corridor change from.
Residential to commercial.
Yeah, you have to, you have to anticipate certain changes, and essentially, that's what we've done with, with the analysis of we wrote, anticipating that the widening will trigger certain changes, but I'm not sure.
But will each commissioner be able to appoint someone to this, over this board that you're talking about, the Citizens Board?
Yes.
To represent their district and everything?
Definitely. More than one person.
More than one person, okay. So, we're each going to have some kind of input, it's not going to be just about one or two districts, okay?
Correct.
And would things like zoning come up? Be part of this?
That comes up, but at a much higher level. It doesn't get into whether you should change anything. Essentially, it looks at the zoning map that was in place in twenty-ten, let's say, at the last one, and it looks at the current changes, and that sort of informs potential decisions on projects, but it doesn't, it doesn't get into the actual zoning aspect. That's.
But would your map, is it going to reflect what has already been done as far as any kind of block zoning?
It will, it will be based, it will be based on the current zoning land use map.
Okay, and I'll check with Ron to see if that's still in place, and it happened many, many years ago, but I don't know if it had a deadline or what, you know, if it's left. It's still there?
I think there's a corridor underway, but I don't know, when you say block zone, I'm not familiar with that.
Well, it's, it required that if property, residential property along Highway Five changed hands, it would have to go to commercial rather than residential. So, I'll get with you and follow up on that. Okay, I yield back.
Good, thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Carthay?
Just, it came to my mind, Director Miguel, there are some constituents in my district who state that they have a lot of through traffic, because people are trying to cut around Chapel Hill and go other places to try to get around traffic. Will those side streets and those areas also be a part of this study, or would you wait to the committee to bring that over to you?
We would, that is part of the discussion at the committee level, because the committee would have membership that is appointed, but there will be public meetings as well, where we will go out into the community to be able to tell them where we are with our effort and gain their input. So, those are the types of things that we would hope they would convey to us during this meeting.
Okay, thank you. I yield. Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthay. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is tab number fifteen, authorization to, authorization for approval of the supplemental agreement number two with R.J. Haney and Associates for additional quantities of items required due to changes in the field conditions in connection with the ITS Expansion Project P1 number zero zero one two six two two, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Miguel.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would, I would like to pull this item from consideration. We've gotten some information recently, in fact, we confirmed it this morning, that there is some work that the Georgia Department of Transportation needs to do before we are ready to do this work, and if they do not do their component, their portion, then I'm not sure, in fact, we would not do all that is included in here. So, some of this may come back before you, at a later date.
Okay.
Once I get a commitment from the GCA.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that. So, we'll move on with that being said, close, we should just make sure this does not appear tomorrow on our, for our meeting. And tab number sixteen, last but not least, for the business items, is authorization to accept a grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars for Keep Douglas Beautiful Litter Prevention Program. Director Stanley?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioner. Last year, we received a grant from Keep America Beautiful to hold a litter enforcement workshop, and we did hold that litter enforcement workshop in March of this year. We were fortunate to have representatives from the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, the City of Douglasville, code enforcement for the county and the city, who were even able to get officers from Newnan Cobb County, people to come and take benefit of the training that Keep America Beautiful provided. In that training, one of the things that the officers identified was, the biggest issue that they have with littering is people not realizing that cigarette butts are, is that that's litter. And so, after we had that meeting, I looked for funding sources, and I identified a grant with Keep America Beautiful for their two thousand nineteen cigarette litter prevention program. They only get a figure of these awards out across the country. They range from twenty-five hundred, five thousand, and ten thousand dollars, and I'm happy to say that Keep Douglas County Beautiful was awarded the highest amount of ten thousand dollars. And so, we will be using this fund that's approved to support the enforcement of the ordinances and appropriate funds. We're going to raise public awareness with a campaign, a public engagement campaign, to let people know that this is litter too. We will be also be able to use the funds to have ash receptacles and put those in transition points around the community so people can dispose of those, and we also will be distributing portable auto and pocket ash trays to adult smokers. So, we just ask that we be allowed to accept these funds, there is no match, to help Keep Douglas County Beautiful.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right, thank you.
Is there any matching that we have to do?
No, there's no match.
Okay. I yield. Okay, thank you. All right, sounds good. All right, Board of Commissioners, tab number seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, regarding our approval of the expenses, please take a look at those tomorrow and be prepared to approve.
I'll have one of them in there, and we'll see from Savannah, so I'll make sure I get the clerk to bring that in.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we have our discussion items, and that's tab number twenty-two, and it's authorization to approve an amendment to the twenty-sixteen intergovernmental agreement for the Fox Hall project and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Valentin?
Board of Commissioners, TAP number seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, regarding our approval of the expenses. Please take a look at those tomorrow and be prepared to approve.
Ms. Ms., I'll probably have one in there in your seat from Savannah, so I'll make sure I get the clerk to bring that in.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, we have our discussion items and that's TAP number twenty-two. And it's authorization to approve an amendment to the twenty sixteen intergovernmental agreement for the Fox Hall project and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Executive Director of our Development Authority, Mr. Chris Pumphrey, will be here. There you are. Please come forth and please present to the Board of Commissioners.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Hope you all are well. As, as you all know, we've had our presentation at the last work session a couple of weeks ago. And that's when we also had the opportunity to hear from the entirety of the team involved in the project, be able to ask questions. We've also had the readout or the discussion about the report from the Terminus Group on their findings and the questions there. From then, we accumulated a lot of, a lot of questions and things that we heard from that meeting. The teams assembled, our team assembled and started to work through some of the challenges that we heard. And then this past Tuesday, received comments from Jennifer Holman as it relates to, you know, some of the items that were, you know, deemed to be negotiable, non-negotiable and what have you. And so, from there, had a follow-up meeting on this past, this past Friday to kind of talk through some of those things. And then now here today. Where we see that we are right now is, you know, still a lot of, I guess, changes and improvements that need to be made to the intergovernmental agreement. And subsequently, probably some more time in order to finalize those things and then make sure that we're able to discuss them with you. But what I'd like to do is just kind of go through some, some key points from, from where we are and base all the things that we heard this past week. Number one, wanted to just let everyone know that the Allen Morris Company is, is the driving principal developer for, for this project. They will be, you know, they are taking the lead. They are providing the seventy-two million dollar developer guarantee. And that's the seventy-two million dollars of funding for the Weston Hotel. They are taking the lead with the Stormont Company in developing the hotel and conference center. So, just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that they are the lead on the project. Also, what we are looking at and some of the key things that need to be amended, you know, are really related to the agreement related to the conference center. So, we're talking about a twenty-five million dollar bond issuance that would cover the cost of development of the conference center itself, which is, you know, roughly around twenty-three million dollars or so. Twenty-five million dollar bond, industrial revenue bond issuance that does not have a guarantee from the Board of Commissioners. And that will finance the construction of the fifty thousand square foot conference center. The conference center and hotel will be on two different parcels, but for those of you that went to the hotel and conference center in Avalon, as you recall, it is seamlessly one building. There's not a separation of the two parcels. They are one building. And so, you're in the hotel lobby, and next thing you know, you're actually physically in the conference center. You did not walk outside, you didn't walk through a door or anything like that. It's kind of one seamless development. Case in point, there's the Douglasville Town Center, which is here, here in Douglasville. You've got the old Walmart building and you have the rest of that shopping plaza. The Walmart building is on a separate parcel. The rest of the development is on, is, the rest of the development is a second parcel. So, it is to show that you can have attached, two attached properties, well, one property with separate parcels on that property. And this will be somewhat, this will be like that, except there won't be a wall dividing the two. So, just wanted to make sure that, that that was clear. The, just kind of the basics of the bonds. So, Piper Jaffray is the investment banker who is responsible for going out to the bond market to raise the twenty-five million dollars of bonds for the conference center. They're also taking the lead on the debt and equity portion for the Weston itself. So, they're the lead group on that. They'll go to the bond market with an agreement from the county. They'll seek the twenty-five million dollars. They will buy those bonds and then the investors will buy those bonds. Those funds will flow through the Development Authority and then transferred to a trustee who within essence pay invoices for construction of the conference center. Another note is that the Douglas County Board of Commissioner will not be asked to write a check for twenty-five million dollars. It is a process that I just laid out. But what is being asked of the Board of Commissioners is to forego the increment taxes generated from the, from the hotel. That's the property taxes, the hotel motel taxes. Forego that increment of tax, just the increment, the new tax generated from those assets being underdeveloped and in operation. And to commit those taxes back through the Development Authority and trustee to pay the debt service on the conference center. There's no recourse on the Board of Commissioners, the county, to use any general funds to make these payments. They are solely based on the increment of the project. If in a point that the project does not meet its, the taxes necessary to pay the debt service, after the developer has to ensure that those payments are made or they work on a refinance, but the county does not have any obligation to make any of those payments just to forego the increment tax generated from the project. The other change that is being requested in, in the IGA for it is the ninety-nine year lease, which everyone has, has asked about. In the current form of the IGA, it is intended that for thirty years while the debt, the debt is out there on, on the conference center, that there is a qualified management agreement for the use of the conference center. And then at the end of that thirty years of the debt being satisfied, that the Development Authority has an option to sell the conference center to the developer at fair market value or enter into a lease or something like that. One of the challenges in the, the finance, you know, arena is that that doesn't give a comfort level that the conference center, the use of the conference center is committed to the use of the hotel. And by not having the use of the hotel and the conference center committed to one another, it poses risk. And so, what the ninety-nine year lease does, it removes the risk of the use of the conference center to the hotel operator. Now, with that, with the ninety-nine year lease, there is no, as I mentioned before, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners is not writing a check for the conference center. It is just foregoing the increment tax. At the end of the thirty years, once the debt service is satisfied, that, that property tax abatement goes away. So, it is a fully taxed project. The hotel motel tax thus comes back to the general fund of the Board of Commissioners. The property tax, the hotel motel tax comes back to, to the Board of Commissioners. But what does not come back to the Board of Commissioners or the Development Authority is the responsibility for maintaining the conference center, is the responsibility for improvements to the conference center, is any responsibility of the conference center. It is solely just being leased and a part of the operation of the hotel and conference center business. So, those were the, those in essence were the main points that I just wanted to raise and just really kind of put some clarification around what the ninety-nine year lease actually means. It actually is a, it's truly more of a benefit to us than it is anything else because we have no liability or responsibility for that conference center. And ultimately, we are, we are benefiting from the benefit of having a hotel and conference center here in our community. It will be generating revenue for, for the county. So, I'll stop there. There were a list of items on, that, that we received comments about. I don't know if you want me to go into those now or not, but that's just kind of where we are right now.
Okay. I just have, Vice Chairman has just to comment. And then that list that you have, if it's abbreviated, if you could just share some of those points with the board.
Sure.
We appreciate it. Vice Chairman Robinson, do you have a question?
Yeah, or do you comment?
Comment.
Can I do the comment for his question?
Yes.
All right. And I'll, I'll keep it tight because I wanted to give context to where we are in the process because there was a comment that was made that I think is appropriate to address since it was germane to this topic. This project is, you know, about three or four years old. For some of those who may just be coming into where we are with that. The Sentinel did a pretty good job of highlighting, if you haven't read Saturday's paper. I believe it had me and Madam Guider and Commissioner Mitchell on the front page. And this one was a pretty, pretty, pretty good article to give context where things are. We were sort of the three senior commissioners that have seen this from day one. And they quoted Commissioner Mitchell, you know, change, 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 which was pretty witty of that moment. And so, we recognize that you've got a slow roll of this, all right? So, when this came before us, we made sure the original ask was for us to make a decision in one day, to which the Finance Committee rejected. This is important. We made sure that the Board of Commissioners could fully have all the information they needed for a full decision. You would need to have, just like when I go get my eyes, you have to have, get professional opinions. Your insurance covers it, but nonetheless, somebody's paying for that. We committed to making sure we had both the financial and the legal input that was necessary to make a decision of this magnitude. We weren't playing with this. This is not amateur moment here in Douglas County. We had to show forth that we got what we were looking at, all right? In addition, we made sure that commissioners had a chance to even respond to what they were hearing. Sometimes we can be in these presentations and it's like, oh my God, this is a long day, like, you know. And we sometimes check out and then after that meeting, we, we have these epiphanies. And as the Board of Commissioners, especially the more seen ones, they know at any given time, at any given moment, they can provide feedback. They also recognize they can receive input at any time from their citizen, all right? This has been a very transparent process. You can subpoena Director Holman, who's not here, that says we have codified everything, all right? This is important. This is not no Cobb, Si, G money deal, you know, type of Sun Trust. We're, we're very serious about this. Now, you gotta clear all that out the way, clear all the innuendos out the way. Like, no, we're looking at this as a very, is this in our best interest? Let's get the facts. Let's look at it. Let's go to our corners as very, you know, the professionals that we were hired to be, that we were supposed to make a decision on behalf of the citizens, and you've got to go through a process. Some of us may be coming to an enlightenment faster than others. That's okay. Depends on what our backgrounds are, all right? Some of us like, no, walk this out now. Make sure you understand what you're looking at. There is no rush with this. This is a partnership, all right? So, we are taking our time. So, at the commencement of this session, we've got legal, all right? We took, we started with financial, took two weeks. Now, we're going to take two weeks to process what legal has to say here in a minute, all right? So, between financial and legal, we have all the input we need to make a decision. But let me distill this down to just really, it's two decisions. The first decision, which is what is being presented to us, is that should we make amendments to the original agreement of two thousand sixteen? They're highlighted by Chris Pumphrey. The second one, which is, I think, the gets this one, is should the Board of Commissioners invest in the regional infrastructure associated with this project alone cap ferry? Those are two separate decisions. Investing in economic development in this county and opening up the Weston Corridor is important. Without that, there's no reason to talk about the amendments. It's one, then the other, all right? You need, like you said earlier, well, we need, we just got Septic out here. Right. Exactly. Let's, and I know that was just a creep, but it serves the whole point. And so, I want to make sure that as we're looking at, that we're not, let's just be honest about where we are with this, that we're being deliberate, we're being thoughtful, we're being mature, we're being professionals, and that we're going to get this right. And then at the end, we can obviously throw the political overlay on top and go in hard. But right now, we're trying to make sure we understand the facts. So, that comment, so here's my one simple question regarding the ninety-nine year lease, or more importantly, the thirty years, all right? So, so follow this because I duly noted, I get the Allen Morris, they're solid. I've spent a lot of time with that. Don't have to, I know they're now number one, there's no longer the prior applicant, but these guys have sort of taken over the deal, no problem. The management company, got it, no problem. Investment bankers, their reputations, okay, got it. You've got a solid team. But here's, it's always about what's in it for the county, right? Sort of what our municipal body says, what is the value exchange? So, here's the question. Let me just get right to it. So, all right, so roughly, you said twenty-five million dollars for these bonds, right? Twenty-five million, keep it simple. And because we know that the infrastructure conversation is a totally settlement, so that's the total forty, but let's separate the two. And the villas, which is the ad valorem and the hotel motel tax, is sufficient to pay for this conference center. Is that correct by itself?
I can answer that. The villas were set aside, the portion of that was set aside with the infrastructure. The hotel and conference center is sufficient for the twenty-five million. I mean, the hotel is sufficient.
All right. So, this, this is what's important and this is why, just again, you're going to have to fill these gaps. So, think about it. If we took the villas off the grid, because again, let's assume we like, look, that was just for infrastructure. So, that means that, oh, that was just for infrastructure. So, that means now the hotel, which was not disclosed in the last meeting, that was key to this whole conversation. Then what's paying for this then? If the villas was only paying for that, so where's the cash coming from that will pay the whole conference center and the hotel? Follow me. And I think you're going to answer my question, but let's just say it's going to be the hotel motel tax as well as the ad valorem for the whole, for the whole thing. I got it. All right. My question is, okay, so what is that, twenty-five million plus what, another seventy-five million? This is where, we still don't have the full story. If it's twenty-five million for the conference center and roughly seventy-five million, I gotta keep this real simple, seventy-five million for the hotel, you've got a loan on that. It's thirty years. Keep it simple.
A loan on the conference center.
Yeah, just a bond, whatever you're going to use as a foundation, just keep it simple. My question becomes, you asked me to spread this over thirty years. This is for the citizens, like, it's like a thirty-year mortgage, forty-year mortgage, fifty-year mortgage. These guys are spraying this out of their time to make it palatable. And we're saying to build this building, we're going to use what? The hotel motel tax as well as the ad valorem tax to make the debt service payments for both of these structures. Is that accurate, recognizing it's one building?
The debt service payment for the conference center.
Just for the conference center?
Yes.
Just for the conference center. All right. So, follow me. Just for the twenty-five million. So, we're going to take everything for, and this is important, I'm sure, now, I need you to weigh in on this one. This is, you gotta follow the money on this one. So, hotel motel tax is just for the conference center, all right? So, that's the debt service. So, what is going to pay the debt service on the seventy-five million dollars?
I'll let Nathan answer that question for you.
And while he's coming, this is important because we can't have sleight of hand. You, you, you have to, this is where I was, I was short in our last meeting when you guys made the presentation down there. But this is one of those, come on, guys, to make a solid decision, you gotta come clean at this level, right? And you can't say, well, I thought we were, I didn't know you need to know that. And so, some of my comments that my colleagues, they know that I made or wrote, had nothing to do with my colleagues. It had more to do with the other side, like, come on, gosh, I know I know better than this. And we need to follow the math solely. Don't make me have to go pull this out of you. Lay it out for us, right? I truly understand this whole thing. I understand the municipal bond buyers on the other side, how they'll eat this up and it will get built. But what you're not telling me is like, okay, but where's the cash that, okay, you've got some operating income out of this hotel that you haven't disclosed to us? Why isn't that paying for? No. And let's just say, okay, all the hotel motel tax pays the debt service. I'm like, so the cash that you have made on this hotel doesn't pay anything on the note? I'm like, oh, my goodness. Which is why some of my colleagues, like, oh, no, I'm about to claw this back. So, and, and we shouldn't have to do that. I just need you to lay it out for me. And again, Nathan, you know where I'm going. This is a setup. He knows I'm going to, he knows what I'm asking. Please walk the full Board of Commissioners through the whole that I just referenced, which is you gotta get the account for the hotel motel tax, the ad valorem, your debt service and operating income. A E I O U, sometimes Y. There are some fundamentals here that are not being addressed. Stay there. I know there's twenty-six variables you can talk about now, but whatever. Focus on those five things, folks.
I will.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chairman Robinson, thank you very much. It's a, it's a very fair question and truly understand where you're coming from. I, I think we do owe the Board of
I, I think we do owe the Board of Commissioners and the administration a sources and uses summary for the hotel, because these things are not straightforward. Financing large development projects is never straightforward, any large development project. The, the project, if I were to put it in the simplest numbers, is roughly, the hotel and conference center, just the hotel and conference center, not including any of the infrastructure or the villas, is just over a hundred million dollar project. That meaning the total cost of build, to develop, to, to provide equipment, services, furnishing, everything that goes into opening a hotel, right down to the coffee cup that sits in your hotel room when you go in there and you wanna make a cup of coffee. That's about just over a hundred million dollars. Twenty-five million of that is for the conference center. That will actually net about twenty-two and a half to twenty-three million dollars in usable funds. The balance of that twenty-five million dollar issuance is in reserves and debt service reserves. So there's a portion of that hundred million dollars plus that sits in reserves for both the public financing, the twenty-three million dollar fifty thousand per foot conference center. The balance of that hundred plus million, let's call it roughly eighty-five million dollars, is for construction of two-hundred-and-fifty-five hotel rooms and the other kind of relative amenities, the spa, the, the restaurants, the bars, the coffee shop, everything that goes along with a world-class hotel and conference center. So within that eighty-five million dollars, we have about fifteen million dollars in equity. That is actual hard funds that come from the Allen Morris Company, our partners. And then, the balance, about sixty million dollars, sorry, seventy million dollars is, is a private loan for the construction that typically comes either from a bank or from a fund, a private fund, investment funds. And that's a loan, so we're paying interest on that, so built in, again, the cost is support for that. That loan, that seventy-five million dollar loan, requires a guarantee. It requires someone to come up and say, we guarantee that if ever there's a default on this loan, we will provide a backstop. And that guarantee is from Allen Morris. W. Allen Morris and the Allen Morris Company provides a, a, a personal guarantee. It's actually a guarantee structure through a series of assets that we have set aside to guarantee such loans. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, okay, alright, and I, I appreciate that, just to give context, so...
And, and, and we will provide that, a document for y'all this week for, to the Commissioners, to, to show exactly what all the sources and uses are of the project.
No, I appreciate, I mean, guarantees are important, I mean, we're, we're a public entity, alright? So you can see what our credit rating is and so forth. I'm sensitive to private sector partners showing their financial balance sheet. Just like the prior operator or owner of the Merrill Room, he did not wanna provide his information publicly so that other citizens could not see it. I got that, but I, I made sure that, no, you're gonna show us. I mean, we went offline, I allowed our finance department to sort of witness what that is. I need the same courtesy, just, it, it needs to be validated, you know how the rules of engagement are regarding financing? We, we need to make sure that, that exists. Second to that, which is, which is important, which is the readiness of the county to be ready to like, ready to go. My question is, we know we can go to market pretty fast on anything through our Development Authority or through ourselves, hundred, twenty days start to finish. But what's key here, which, which, which drives this whole thing, is the performance of the hotel. To the citizens, this thing will be built, as stated. They're gonna make sure. So we're gonna have this beautiful facility. I'm less concerned about the structure, I'm more concerned about how this thing is gonna perform, alright? And, and can it cash flow in a way that has no exposure? So then, my question is back to your, I mean, so you've got a loan against a eighty-five million dollar bill, it doesn't matter, just keep math simple. You've got a loan, you've got this debt. Is there sufficient operating income to pay that debt? No different than somebody's got a job and you have enough income coming in to pay their loan. This is very simple. We need to see that, alright? We, we need to see that, and I think you said that impact analysis, that economic analysis, it exists. We need to see that. You can't get ahead of a decision until I see that. I just don't know, will it get, be built? See, sell me on whether or not we can use junk bonds and so forth, as they say, high-yield municipal bonds. That's easy, guys, the thing will get built. I've spent a lot of time on that. It'll work the way they designed it. But what you gotta push through is, okay, but y'all ain't answered my question, which is, it's all about the hotel. It's not about the spa, it's not about the conference center, and it's like, why y'all keep focusing over there? The issue is the hotel. That's what drives it. Price of the room times quantity occupancy rate gives me some revenue. Can you make your payment? So, here's the second thing, now, I'm, I'm, I've got it, I'm helping my topic. Second thing is, you're, you're, do you have the loan lined up? Your, your comment was, well, it's like a, and we're, we're trying to be very specific. Do you have a lender, like you have UBS and Piper Jaffray, their own board to issue bonds for, whether it was infrastructure or for the conference center? My question is, who is the lender that is going to loan you eighty-five million dollars for this? Now, I get the Development Authority can do what they do, because we're government, it's gonna get done. But when you have a private sector partner, and again, I'm, I'm not pushing this, if there needs to be something, but some kind of way, you've gotta disclose to us, who's lending you this money? And show me some type of letter of intent, there's plenty of real estate people in here, this is nothing new, it's the same fundamentals. Show me a letter of intent that we can get comfortable to say that, okay, are y'all really ready to go? We, we don't wanna get too far ahead, if y'all really are not ready to go, and y'all trying to see, well, we know what we can do. The question is, are you ready? If we were to approve these amendments and give that, are you ready to go? And we need to have assurances. So, me getting ahead is like, well, guys, ain't no, ain't no, to the citizen, there's no rush. The county is, is prepared to do whatever it can do, based on, just like we do, whether it's a SPOST or whatever, we do what we do. But in, in a partnership, this is important. So can you answer the question on, is there truly a lender at the table that, that has committed to you? And then, I don't care, it's the spirit of it, it don't have to be letter. And the spirit of it is gonna give you eighty-five million dollars for that hotel. And the second thing is that, in your sources and uses, does it disclose to me the operating income and how much is going to be applied to the debt to pay off that loan? And how much, because this is important, I wanna know, if I'm paying for the hotel and conference center through hotel motel taxes and ad valorem, I mean, you mean, I'm saying, oh, what, y'all gonna sit on all the operating income and you have no debt payment? That's an issue. That is my only issue. I have one issue, that right there. You have to solve that for me right there. That's the fundamental math equation. All these hotel motel taxes, all the ad valorem, and I know we're giving some concessions, let that go, are gonna go straight through this thing. The bondholders get all the excess, I get it, they get the hotel motel taxes, they pay the thousand dollars per block, they add up, guys, I get that. My question is, where is the operating income that this hotel is making? If I'm paying for it as the county, I'm paying for the conference center, which is a joint building, they gotta be together. I'm paying, and that's when I'm like, guys, y'all are not showing me the revenue cash, and that's the part, that right there, where is that operating? And think about it, guys, you don't have to pay a debt, because the county has paid for the whole thing. That means you get to keep all the cash to yourself. I need some accounting for that on the other side, that's what I'm saying, I keep trying to get around, and I'm gonna basically get there, I'm not that blind. I'm gonna get around that corner, and I'm like, okay, guys, answer this question. So, that's my fundamental issue to my peers, I, I just have that. The rest of it, I'm immaterial, I can yield to whatever angle you guys wanna work on. I don't believe in guaranteeing the, the, the infrastructure. I think there's no way, first you're gonna take all my cash and then you want me to guarantee, like, no, uh-uh, that's too much. I'm a solid no on that. Solid no on guaranteeing infrastructure for the project. That's too much. And, and so, I'm, I'm, I'm making this like, we're not trapped in the corner yet, guys, we're not at the ADR line back there, you know, this way. We're not two, two yards from a safety, it's like, no. I took a proactive approach to this project, like, okay, wait a minute, let's clear the air. We're not, no, no, I, I, yeah, I get it, I see, no, I should see him. But I need, I need to get this out. And this was important, that you gotta get this out there, because there's a lot of questions, I, I finally got some emails from a couple people, and we're not being clean. And, and, and this is my point. If you guys are pitching, we, we should, these should be answered up front. And, and my point is, so there's a lot of speculation, like, no, clear the air, please help us clean this up so we can get to a point of clean decision, that's all. So I'm setting your context to get you to where you wanna get to, because you gotta answer it. Okay, I do, thank you. Thank you for that, go ahead.
So, Vice Chairman Robinson, I understood your question. It, it's, it's, do we have a lender lined up? And, and the answer is, no. The process for funding these projects, and we've closed in the last twelve months about three-hundred million dollars in construction loans in Florida and Georgia. I just, myself, closed a hundred-and-one million dollar construction loan with Barings, which is the lending arm of Mass Mutual, about, about a month and a half ago. So this is something that the Allen Morris Company has done very regularly in our six-year history. But there are things that we need to be effective in selling bonds and securing private loans. And, and when you're talking about a hotel conference center in the US typically, meaning in most cases that we're aware of, the, the public, some level of commitment on the public portion of the financing is a prerequisite for offering the bonds. In other words, bond buyers, the people who are actually purchasing the bonds, want to know that whichever public entity is joining hands with the developer in the hotel conference center is actually committed. So if we were to go out and attempt to sell the bonds before we had that commitment, we, we would, we would not have a successful bond offering, it wouldn't go anywhere, we wouldn't sell the bonds, and we will have all not used our time effectively. On the private side, the construction loan for the hotel, which I would love Chairman Robinson, Vice Chairman Robinson, to be in a situation where I had no debt on a building and I could take all the income directly. That's not the situation on the Weston Hotel and Conference Center. There's very significant debt service on the seventy-five million dollar private loan, and that's where the majority of the hotel operating income goes to support that and the two-hundred-and-fifty employees that will be employed at the hotel and conference center. Who are very, that's quite a large payroll, if you can imagine. But to answer your question, we have to have that commitment on the public side of the funding, some level of commitment. We view that as a revised intergovernmental agreement that we hope to negotiate with the Board. And we also need to be able to make other representations to the private debt markets. There are many representations we need to make, our guarantee, we need to show them what substantiates that guarantee first and foremost. We need to represent that we have a significant team. We need to represent that the hotel, when it's built, can be operated. So things like, is there electricity running up the hotel? Is there water, is there sewer, there roads? And that was the context for the infrastructure bonds that were previously discussed. So until I have all of those representations, both the infrastructure and the support on the public side for the conference center, I can't market it. What I can provide to you are letters of representation from many lenders we've worked with, TD Bank, Sun Trust, Barings, any number of lenders, who will provide letters to the Board of Commissioners stating that as long as the Hotel and Conference Center meets their underwriting standards, they will loan money to the Allen Morris Company.
Alright, and I think I can summarize this, so, back to your point, it's the chicken and the egg. But, but, we would not, I cannot support the issuance of any bonds for the conference center until I had assurances that you got your loan for the hotel, alright? Not, not one thing moves, right? Because again, we, you can't, that's important. We need, we need to see that you've got your money together, which, we're not concerned about us, but I got it, we gotta do our part, guys. We gave you this, these, these agreements, we gave you these concessions on that, and I'm gonna move on to the agreement. When did you show us your hand and have it approved? I got it. Infrastructure, I get it. But the current structure that you had, which was the challenge of guaranteeing it, that's the path of easy resistance. It's easy for you to sell something if you put a county's credit on the line. But this makes your investment banker just have to work a little bit harder, says, well, well, why are you in my credit card? Why, why can't I just use my checking account and do it this way? And so, what I was trying to show my peers, like, guys, we were in a, in a passive position. We sort of like, let's, let's get it, if we wanna get involved in this, we're not detailed. And I, I think in a partnership, it's just like, well, are we really there yet? And this is the, the issue that I have with this current process, but maybe it's a good thing that we're doing this publicly, is that a lot of this should be worked out, but you, you got the Board of Commissioners actually working on this. Like, I didn't go, get to go to the sheriff's thing this weekend, I didn't get to go to Roger Bruce's thing, I know I'm gonna hear it last, that. I didn't get to go to see the trailblazers, see my friend get awards and so forth, 'cause I stayed at home. And I immersed myself for forty-eight dollars in this information. Because this is probably the only subject that I get in its totality. So my, what you're hearing out of me is like, okay, guys, okay, I get it. But I'm trying to take the pressure off my team, like, guys, we missed you, we're good, we're like, they, we're not there yet. So to the citizens, like, we're not there yet. We still need to hear about the hotel, give me, don't, don't tell me in a PowerPoint presentation, show me. So we can analyze and update our financial document with the hotel component to it. We've got the legal coming. We're not there to make a decision, which I thank Madam Chair and the County Administrator for pulling this from a, we weren't ready, Madam Chair. There's no way that you could adequately, because we don't have all the information yet. And so, I'm, I'm trying to surmise where we are, says, guys, y'all got some holes to do. You, you gotta give us some full information for us to get there. So, that being said, I have nothing else to say, I mean, I pretty much have framed, like, we need more information to make the decision. I guess we'll come back in two weeks and see where we are. My Commissioners can go in as hard as they want on any angle, but until they give us the fundamentals, let's talk about it. I, I mean, not, not in public form, it's like, okay, well, just do the homework, just do the work. Just, just give us the information so we can make a decision. But I, I think that there's, we, we need some more input.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other comment before, okay, Board of Commissioners, and also, you know, tab number twenty-two and twenty-three? I'm just gonna consider those combined, because it sounds like we need some, some deliverables or pending. So with that being said, we'll, perhaps, I guess you can make a request to come back another time. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I mean, I get it, we'll pick this up in our finances, you know, again, I guess the ask is that the economic impact, when we get that, we will submit that. The goal is to submit to our Municipal Office to update his risk assessment. I'll do it after, if you don't mind.
Okay. Alright, thank you so much for the presentation. Next, we have tab number twenty-four, which is spots all of the legal findings.
Madam Chair, I, I didn't, the, the agenda item reads that way, but essentially what we have is this. We're going to be presenting an executive session because this deals with our opinions about legal matters. A full, full report to this Board. I would say for public, of public consumption, because I think both the Chair and the Vice Chair have asked me to let the public know what we have done. I can say that we took the terminus material. We have talked to David Corbman at great lengths multiple times, Roger Murray and myself, Roger's sitting behind me, Roger's a partner, Murray Barnes, a minister. We have not talked with the people involved with the development itself. We're not weighing on the merits of the development. We simply took the structures that were evaluated by David Corbman, and we did a legal analysis in our opinion about those things. And so, I will be reporting that to the Board in the executive session, what the Board chooses to do, whether it be up to the Board. So, I plan on doing that today.
Thank you so much, very good. That's, at this time, you know, next we have Board appointments, but that's all, so we discussed an executive session. Attorney Bernard, at this time, do you need to go into executive session?
You need one for both, you need executive session for legal, real estate, and personnel law for a minute, chairman.
Okay, thank you so much. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Ten minutes.
Second. Do we have a motion in the second, all in favor, please, I'm raising my hand, sign high. Assuming Commissioner Mitchell was right there. Okay, well, we have a majority, so the motion carries. Take ten minutes, get your, get your comments, come back, thank you. We should, we should. Alright, Board of Commissioners, we are back, and thank you so much. Are there any other items that need to be discussed? Vice Chairman Robinson?
Ma'am Chair, just... Madam Chair, just as, as a point of clarification, may I?
Yes.
Okay, on the previous question that we were talking about regarding the Fox Hall proposal, uh, I'd like to, um, make a recommendation that we take this back up at our very next work session, uh, for ultimate vote on that Tuesday, on whether to, A, or one, the Board of Commissioners will approve, um, the, um, economic development, investment in infrastructure, and two, approving the intergovernmental agreement amendments for Fox Hall, two separate decisions, take them up at our very next meeting, up or down?
Okay, so, next meeting is the next two weeks?
Two weeks, June 3rd and 4th?
Uh-huh, yes. June 3rd and 4th, but I, I guess we don't want to be misleading to the citizens, you said to approve, we'll just say to approve or disapprove. Yeah, let's just, let's just make sure that, for the record, I don't want them to say, well, yeah, to consider.
I see what you said, to consider.
To consider.
You gotta consider, yeah.
Yeah, we'll say consider.
You will say what you want to say in your motion, guys, I'm just...
Yeah, we got to.
I get it.
And Madam Chair, those items, 23, let me just write the number, 20, 22, 23, and 24 were technically discussion items, so they, I think they can probably just be removed by the Chair, if the Chair wants to. Uh, if you're going to do it by motion, you have to do that at the meeting, but I think because they're not business items, if you want to take them off, you can just take them off.
I said none of these are agenda items, so I'll let them follow that.
Okay.
Just to work them.
Okay, good.
Okay.
So, and 24...
Infrastructure, the legal findings, and the...
Yeah, 24 won't be on there.
None of those.
Yeah, none of those.
Okay.
So, confirm with County Clerk?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, I mean...
June 3rd, or we're going to...
We will place the only work session on June 3rd.
Okay.
And, and Commissioner May, you have to consider it.
Yeah. Consider one to vote, alright?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I just wanted to confirm for the open record outside of this room.
Okay, well, if we don't have anything else to come before this, this meeting is adjourned.